We're live now. We're good to start, Mr. Chairman, anytime you're ready.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Cagnetta, and this is the meeting of the South Kingston Rhode Island zoning Board of Review. Members tonight that are present are Thomas Daniels, our Vice Chairman, Richard Jurzak, Bill Rosen, and Casey Charcwick. Also present is Jamie Gordon, the Gorman, sorry, not Gordon. South Kingston interim building zoning, building official. Amy Goins, the South Kingston Special Legal Counsel, and Jessica Spence, Administrative Support Associate. This board is made up of seven people, where five of us are regular voting members. Five members are required to be present in order to vote, and tonight we do have five. And we have one of our alternates kind of stepping in. Tonight, the voting members will be myself, Thomas Daniels, Richard Jurzak, Bill Rosen, and Casey Charcwick. Applicants are here for either a variance, dimensional or use variance, or to seek a special use permit. This board is a quasi judicial body created by South Kingston ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe to be in a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless they get a little carried away, or it is determined not to be relevant. So in the interest of time, please try to point out the facts and be brief. And I'm going to go over some of the things that you should talk about based on each application. We do our best not to argue, and we keep things civil, and we try not to have a petition later than 10 o'clock. When your petition is called, please raise your hand. Jessica will go through that and clearly state your name and spell it for the record. Please speak clearly so we can all hear you. You will then be asked to take an oath to tell the truth, and then you can present your petition along with any other witnesses that are testifying in your support. The board will then ask you or your witnesses questions after the petitioner has presented their testimony. Anyone else with questions about the application or waiting to support or oppose the petition will then be asked to raise their hand. We will, they will identify themselves, be sworn in and present their testimony, which may be followed up by questions from the board. And please do not ask any direct questions to the petitioner or other witnesses. You can ask the board, and then the board will then ask the question if we feel it's relevant. The board will allow the petitioner to answer any questions raised by the audience and/or respond to comments after the comment period. After hearing all the testimony and before a vote is taken, board members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. So you are aware, variance or special use permits require four out of five voting members to vote in favor of the petition for the granting of the requested relief. Board members will ask a lot of questions, and there's a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. We have rules to follow, and this is based on South Kingston's ordinance. So you must give testimony that supports certain facts that allow your request to be approved, or in the case that you're against, denied. So it has to be on point. So tonight, we have dimensional variances and a special use permits on the agenda for variances. Okay, you must offer the following evidence to the board for the, to support the following. The hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and/or structure, and is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Your hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part. The granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. The relief requested is the least relief necessary. And you must also show that the hardship that you will suffer if the variance is not granted will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. For a special use permit, you must present the following. That the special use permit that you're requesting is specifically authorized by the zoning ordinance. Somewhere in the zoning ordinance, it has to be authorized that we're, that you're allowed to have that use in that spot, or we don't have the power to grant it. The special use permit requested meets all the criteria set forth in our zoning ordinance. That's authorized for a special use. And that granting of the special use permit will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. So staying on these points will help us sort of get through the meeting and get through the pertinent information. So we'll help you as you go through to make sure that we all stay on point. And in order to make yourself known, Jessica is going to run through some of the rules for procedures for the evening.
Good evening, everyone. So a couple of things to keep in mind when we're going through this. I'm going to have all applicants remain muted, and I'm going to turn off your video until your petition has been called. At that time, I will ask the applicant to unmute, and I will ask them for permission to turn their video back on. The applicants, as the chairman had stated, we're going to give your testimony. The board may ask any relevant questions. Once the applicant has completed testimony, the chairman will ask if there is anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in regards to that petition. At that point, anyone in attendance should raise their hand. You'll be unmuted and allowed to speak. When you're done speaking, I will be placing you back on mute. Once all the testimony has been heard, the applicant will be muted, their video will be turned off, and you'll be moved to an attendee. At that point, you can either stay in the meeting or you can leave the meeting. A couple of things to keep in mind. The agenda and all of the supporting documents are available to view online at southkingstonri.com. And then if you do a search under current zoning applications. Also, if you're having any technical difficulties, you can review the agenda. There are some helpful fixes on that. In regards to technical issues, there is a question and answer button. You can use that for technical issues only. We will not answer any questions in regards to any petitions on that question and answer button. There are going to be people who are calling in by phone, so we need to make sure that everyone is speaking clearly and to always state your name prior to speaking. And then if you are calling in by phone and you wish to speak, you're going to need to raise your hand. So by phone, it is star nine to raise your hand, and then star six will mute and unmute you. If you're on a computer, there is an icon that you can hit that says raise hand. And that's about it for me, Mr. Chairman. You're muted, Mr. Chairman.
2020 phrase of the year. So the, if anyone has any issues, it hopefully is fairly self-explanatory on the screen. But just, just do your best to sort of make yourself known. But jumping up and down in front of the camera won't help because your camera's off. So we have several things to get to in the agenda. First is the continuation for the petition of the South County Survey Company LLC. And Amy, do we, did you want to go through some of the points of this first, or should I read it through? Because we have two, one is the continuation and one is the petition, so I didn't know if you wanted to explain that first.
Sure, this is Amy Goins, Legal Counsel. This matter was originally continued from August 27th. There was a notice issue regarding the deck. So I believe what happened, and Jess can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the applicant continued it out to this date. And after that continuance, the site plan and application was amended. The notice was amended as well. So the original application was withdrawn. It should really be considered a new hearing on an amended application. You'll notice if you review the agenda, the newly submitted petition indicates that relief is requested for lot coverage. That wasn't in the notice for the original application. So I would start this from scratch, but it should be noted, all the documents that were originally received, meaning all the objector correspondence, is still considered part of the record for this. But we are here tonight on the revised site plan and the revised application.
Okay. So, so I don't need to necessarily read in the continuation, or do we need to close it out to continue? Nothing?
It's that, that first item on the agenda, Roman numeral one. It has been withdrawn, so there's no action the board needs to take. You can read Roman numeral number two.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, great. So we got. All right. So we have the petition of Michelle Quirk, care of the South County Surveying LLC of 382B Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island 02879. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing garage and construct a 24 by 24 detached garage with a family recreation room above it to be used by the principal dwelling. The lot is non-conforming by dimension. The lot is located on a corner lot and has two interior side yards. The garage will be located 1.9 feet from the left side of the property line. The required yard setback is 15 feet. Relief of 13.1 feet is requested. The garage will also be located four feet from the side yard in the rear of the garage, which is considered a side yard. Relief of 11 feet is requested. The proposed lot coverage will be 24.6. The maximum lot coverage allowed is 20%. Relief of 4.6 feet is requested. The structure will meet the height requirement of 20 feet. The lot size is 7,100 square feet, 7,500 square feet. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section 208, non-conforming lots of record accessory building setback requirements, section 401, schedule of dimensional regulations, and section 907, standards of relief. Owner of the property is Michelle Quirk for the premises located at 59 Browning Street, Assessors Map 96-1, Lot 32, and is zoned R30. And Jessica, we do have quite a few documents that you had just revised. Do you mind reading through those, just so we have them documented?
One second.
Sorry, I switch back and forth from asking you.
That's okay. Amy, do you want me to read in from the original application, like the application, the butters list, all of that stuff, or just kind of start with the revised application?
You can start with the original one, just so we, we have everything that was in that record.
Okay, so what we received was an original application signed and dated July 17th, 2020. A signed and notarized owner authorization form dated July 15th, 2020. A 200-foot radius map and a butters list. Elevation's dated July 16th, 2020. A site plan dated July 17th, 2020, which was prepared and stamped by James Calderon, PLS. We had the original legal notice, the certified mail receipts, and the notarized affidavit of mailing. Then we received a revised application signed and dated November 13th, 2020. Assigned and known, and signed and notarized owner authorization form dated July 15th, 2020. A 200-foot radius map and a butters list. An elevation dated July 16th, 2020. Proposed condition site plan dated November 10th, 2020, which was prepared and stamped by James Calderon, PLS. And then construction documents labeled P-1, prepared by WG Carpentry, dated November 13th, 2020. There was also the revised legal notice, certified mail receipts, and notarized affidavit of mailing. For correspondence, we received from Bert Hess, August 14th, 2020. An additional correspondence from Bert Hess received August 17th, 2020. Correspondence from Maura Hurson Yenick and Marcia Toxen received August 17th, 2020. From David Carlson received August 18th, 2020. Richard de Blasio received August 18th, 2020. Bert Hess received December 8th, 2020, and Richard de Blasio dated December 15th, 2020. Well, that's it.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay. So who do we have here tonight for the Michelle Quirk, South County Surveying LLC?
James Calderon, professional lands surveyor.
Okay. And Mr. Calderon, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And what is your role in this project?
Professional lands surveyor.
Okay, you mentioned that. So are you, are you speaking on behalf of the petition?
I am, and also the owner is here as well, Shelley.
Okay. So walk us through it as if we haven't been walked through before.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Cagnetta, members of the board. Again, my name is James Calderon, last name is spelled C-A-L-D-A-R-O-N-E. Professional lands surveyor, owner of South County Survey Company. The property is 59 Browning Street in Green Hill. As stated, it's a non-conforming lot of records in the R30 zoning district, and it's just 7,500 square feet. The first, and perhaps the most important point that I'd like to make is that the dimensional request applied for is the same setback as the existing garage to the side property line. And it's actually now more than twice the distance from the existing garage to the rear property line. The rear property line, I believe, the existing garage was that, was previously 1.9 feet, we're now 4.0 feet. The proposed garage will meet the required height limit for an accessory structure. The lot coverage will be increased from 23.0% existing to 24.6% proposed, which is an increase of approximately 120 square feet of the 120, 96 of that is a second-story deck. A second stories deck. The existing garage was built in the 1930s. It is dilapidated, likely dangerous. The existing garage consists of a one-car garage, a small storage area, an attached carport, and a shed roof to be used. That's used to house trash and recycling, which the owner would like to now hide from plain view, the trash and recycling that is. The footprint of the proposed garage and the recreation room above it is the same depth and width as the existing garage and, and its attachments, and is essentially, it's sliding two feet closer to the road. The previous application was for a 24 by 26-foot garage, and the owner has cut back two feet on the depth to allow for a safe distance between the proposed garage and another existing garage on Lot 31 to the south. Also, the proposed garage will not be any closer to the street than the existing house. The proposed garage is not located in a wetland or a perimeter wetland. It is located in an AE flood zone with a base flood elevation of 12, 12 feet, and will be constructed to be floodplain compliant. And really want to emphasize that the owner's intention is to make a less-than-ideal situation better. And that's really the long and short of it. At this time, I would like to have Shelley, Michelle Quirk, sworn in to offer any comments that she might like to offer.
Okay, great. The first, board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Calderon concerning his testimony so far?
Tom Daniels, yeah, Mr. Calderon. I'm just curious, you're, you're 1.9 feet on one side, four feet on the other.
That's correct.
How is a new, new construction, if you can answer it, going to take place without people on the other side of the property line, which may cause an issue for your, for your applicant?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm necessarily qualified to speak to the construction practices that will be employed. You know, as a, as a lands surveyor and not a general contractor. However, I'd imagine that this will, you know, I'm kind of spitballing here, but it'll be built from the inside, if you will. Yeah, I wish I had a better answer than that, but that's, you know. They are going to take, take care to not, you know, encroach onto their, onto their neighbor's property during construction.
I mean, that's not necessarily, I don't think, a something we have to consider, but it could lead down the road to some issues, I would, would think.
Sure.
Based on objectors. That's all.
Yeah, again, if I may, it's not getting any closer to the sideline, and we're, we're actually increasing the distance to the rear property line. I mean, it's only 1.9 feet existing. I take that back, it's 1.6 feet existing to the rear, and we're going to 4.0 feet, 1.9 from the side.
Mr. Chairman, Rick Jurzak.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Calderon, is, did you say the square footage is the same?
It's essentially the same as the existing garage and attachments. However, the difference is about 120 square feet of the 120, 96 of that is the second-story deck. It's, it's slightly larger. You know, the, the existing garage is approximately, and attachments are approximately 24 by 24. The proposed garage is exactly 24 by 24.
What can I, well, I'm not sure you're the guy to ask, but what, what's the purpose of the slider on the, on the ground floor?
Yeah, I would have to defer to the owner on that.
Okay, then I'll, I'll hold that in advance. Yep.
Bill Rosen here, Mr. Chairman. As I recall, was there a shower on the, on the old garage?
Not on the garage. There is an outdoor shower attached to the rear of the, of the principal structure, the existing dwelling. When Shelley purchased the property, that shower was over the property line. I believe it was about eight tenths of a foot that it was over by. She has since had that modified and cut back, and it is now two tenths of a foot inside of her property line. So she's.
So there is going to be a shower on the new?
It's, it's already there. There's an existing shower on the back of the main principal dwelling, the principal structure, the dwelling. But there is no shower on this garage, there's no shower on the existing or proposed garage.
Okay. Is the principal dwelling just a one-story?
Yeah, yes, good question. I should know this off the top of my head, and I don't. Shelley.
We can find out when.
Okay, okay. But the garage is two stories, right?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And I'll let her speak to that, you know, the reasoning behind having the recreation room there, but that is correct, yes.
Any other board members? Most certainly, we'll go on to Ms. Quirk.
I'll just say, the dwelling looks like it's one story on satellite.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Quirk, do you want to? Can we get her on and her sworn in, and we can?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
So please spell your name.
Michelle Quirk, last name is Q-U-I-R-K, first name is Michelle, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E.
Okay, great. And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
So please tell us anything you want to add. I know there are some questions for you, but.
Yeah, so the structure is, the, the, I think somebody asked the, the second floor, what's the reasoning? Basically, what I wanted to do is I have a very, very small home. I just wanted to put a rec-type room for the kids when they, when they're playing, they can play up in the room above the garage. And I wanted to put a small deck in addition. If I'm going to redo the garage, because it has to be done, I wanted to add that. It's not, it's, it's not anything more than that, a rec space. And there's no shower on the new garage. I think somebody asked that, that's, it's the existing shower on the house that was redone.
But that's not part of this petition, really. It's, it's a matter of, the proposed garage is going farther away from the rear.
Yes.
Well, farther away from both, but, but farther from the rear than it is to the side.
Yeah.
And, and you feel that there's adequate space for maintenance as well as construction, surrounding the building, not to disturb any of the neighbors?
More space now, since we moved it since our last meeting.
Okay. Okay, great. Board members, any questions? Richard, yes. Turn on your mic.
Yeah. Ms. Quirk, can you answer my question that I asked before? The, what's the purpose of the slider on the first floor?
It's really a door from, so right now, it looks, it's kind of like a carport right now. It was just a, an entrance into the garage from there. It's like a door, a slider going into the garage.
On your plans, there's, so you're going to put a slider into the garage, right?
Yes.
Base level. Okay. And just because you want a slider, is that it?
No, well, because right now, the way that the building is, it's, it's like a veranda kind of thing, and we like that. But to get to the garage, to go in the garage, you have to go around.
Okay.
So it's just, it's like a doorway essentially into the garage.
Okay, and you do have a shower upstairs, is that true?
No, oh, yes, yes.
There's a shower up on the second floor?
Yes.
And the deck, what's the purpose of the deck? Just to be outside, is that it?
Well, that, and because where that garage is, if we sit on it, you can see the ocean from there.
Okay, so you can see the ocean from the deck?
It, well, on the roof, so we've gotten up on the roof to see if you could see the ocean, and you can't. So if we put a deck there, you can see the ocean.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me.
Okay.
All right. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Richard. Any other board members' questions from Ms. Quirk? Okay. So Mr. Calderon or Ms. Quirk, do you guys have anyone else that you wanted to present in terms of, for testimony?
I don't believe so, unless you do, Shelley.
No, I mean, unless there's specific construction questions, I can get Kurt, but he's the guy that's doing the building. Other than that, if there's no specific constructions questions.
Yep.
So, and this is under, I mean, this is essentially being considered an accessory apartment because of the bathroom? Correct, or no?
No. It is not.
Okay, so just because it has a bathroom, we don't have to, it's not considered accessory, just to make sure.
Chairman, can I speak on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gorman.
So this, this property is located in the carrying capacity overlay district, so it would be prohibited to have an accessory apartment.
So, so the fact that it has a bathroom doesn't, doesn't create it as a accessory?
No, they would have to have, to be a dwelling unit accessory apartment, it would have to have kitchen as well as a bedroom. We just spell it out on the building permit, make sure that it doesn't be viewed other than that, than rec space over a garage in the future.
And Shelley or Jim, there's no intent to, to have a kitchen or closets or any other dwelling use?
No, just the bathroom.
Board members, any other questions for the applicant?
Richard, just one quick one. I assume this is going to be heated, the upstairs?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right. So. So, uh, in the correspondences, we did get a number of objections. I know some of them were prior to the, uh, revised. Um, so, while some of them are, are, are after the revised, we have, uh, so. Of the list that Jessica read in, um, we have, uh, Mr. Hess and Mr. de Blasio. Uh, sending in after the revised, um, application on December eighth and December fifteenth. Um, both of those, uh, documents, um, have opposition, uh, to the, um, construction of the. Garage and I believe. Make sure I have the right one. I have the November eleventh. I can't seem to find the one from December eighth, Jessica, from Mr. Hess.
Okay, one moment.
Uh, but we do.
I believe it's the same as the November eleventh. He just sent a second, he's just in a separate, separate, second copy, I think.
Oh, he did, okay. So.
De Blasio's is new.
Okay, so, um, I will, Mr. Hess's correspondence, uh, this one dated November eleventh, twenty twenty. Uh, he's saying he's opposed to the three-story addition, um, and rear deck expansion. Is this the right, am I reading the wrong one?
I have the December eighth one. It's just, uh, hold on one second.
Okay. I think I'm reading the wrong one here.
If I may, I believe the letter you're referring to was posted earlier and actually I'm having trouble locating it now as well. Um, I'm just seeing the, the Blasio letter.
Okay.
But I saw the, the recent Hess letter earlier today.
They are both online.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Well, I'll, I'll start with Mr. de Blasio then. I was just gonna read Mr. Hess first, but. Uh, Mr. de Blasio's is, uh, dated December fifteenth and twenty twenty. It's a follow-up from the August eighteenth email. It's, they find it unacceptable for the building to be constructed less than two feet from the property. They find it unacceptable, uh, that an exterior structure, outdoor shower, which they emailed about, which is not part of this application. Um, so we won't read that in. They have engaged the services of a, a surveyor and everything is clearly marked. I'm not sure. I think that's more of the, the shower that they're referring to. Saying, uh, that they're, in their opinion, that the dimensional variance request in its current form should be denied. They have supported my position by statements of fact that included the current lot coverage exceeded the maximum lot coverage allowable. Um, there is currently a structure that has four inches on their property line, um, which again isn't part of this application. So, uh, basically, uh, to sum it up, that less than two feet from the property line is the concern and, um, but he is. Is he on the one point nine side or is he on the?
He's on the four point oh side.
He's on the four point oh side, okay.
Previously, less than two feet and now it's been increased to four feet.
It's been increased to four, okay. Um, is Mr. de Blasio here by chance?
I do not see anyone raising their hand. So again, you'll need to raise your hand if you're in attendance and you wish to speak. If you're calling in by phone, it is star nine to raise hand and star six will mute and unmute. And I do have someone who's raised their hand, um, and I also have the letter from Mr. Hess dated December eighth. So I don't know.
Let's do the raised hand first and, and, uh.
Okay, so, um, Mary Gale Smith, I have allowed you to speak, so you just need to unmute yourself. There you are, you should be good.
So Mary Gale Smith, um, could you please state your name?
Oh, it's Bert Hess. And I am not able to zoom on my own and, uh, Mary Gale Smith is, well, has been willing to help me.
That's fine. So Mr. Hess, uh, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, um, so good, so that, that, I'm glad you're here. Um, so please explain what your objection is to the petition.
I think it would have been helpful if you had my letter of December eighth first, so.
I do have it.
I think would have reviewed it.
Uh, I, I, Jessica, could you, could you put that up for us so we can see that?
Please be able to follow through with me.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So there's page one and then I can scroll down once.
So you're, you're opposed to the, to the garage?
I'm opposed to the garage, uh, to begin with, we have a situation where. Uh, you already have a non-conforming, two non-conforming structures.
Okay.
They're asking to expand the use of the non-conforming and you're not correcting. The, uh, existing conditions.
Uh, which existing conditions?
Well, one is the shower and at the, that the, um, dwelling itself, the cottage itself. Is not located on the property, uh, in the, uh, usual, uh, spacing.
Well, we're not here for the house or the shower, we're just.
I understand, but you're expanding, uh, usually you occur, try to correct, uh, a non-conforming use. You don't try to add to it?
Not necessarily, but.
Okay, we'll move on. I've been in construction over fifty years myself. I hold several licenses. And, um, I find that it would be very interesting to see. How this garage could be constructed on the two-foot side, uh, particularly handling, uh. Uh, the, uh, sheathing and the, uh, whatever shingles or, uh. Vinyl siding or whatever else would be needed. Uh, there's a reason why we have setbacks. And that's to be able to allow, uh, such things as being able to construct it and to be able to maintain it. And these stands, and I'm gonna call them plants, but they are, uh, not much more than an outline. And, uh, it's difficult to even see what's re- uh, requested. It does not show any plumbing, which, uh, apparently there is plumbing. There's, uh, extensive electrical. Uh, I would think, uh, you're gonna need smoke alarms. Uh, they should be shown.
Well, that's for the building permit for, for, just for the purposes of the zoning, uh, for the setbacks. All we need is actually the plot plan or the, 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 uh, positioning of the foundations, really, is all we need.
All right, then, um, I, I'm, I'm opposed to it on the setbacks.
Okay. And, 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 and you're opposed to the setbacks because it's already two, you know. Too much already, like it's all already too close?
It's already too close. These were add-ons, uh, probably, I would surmise, they were added at a. At a later date, uh, from nineteen, uh, if I heard nineteen thirty-five, the lean-to was probably added without a permit, of course. And, and the same with the other side, with the shed.
The garage or?
Pardon?
Of the garage?
On the garage. They were extensions of the garage. The garage itself was, is a small. Uh, one-car garage, uh, common the era.
Okay, yep. But they're, they're, they're proposing to build something of similar footprint.
They would like.
That's a little bit.
The footprint of, uh, of, of a non-conforming structure.
Uh, yes. Yes, but a, all of these lots are non-conforming and is the, kind of the trouble with this particular lot.
Yeah, and this is a very unique and very, uh, special area. It is in a flood zone. It's a wetlands and when it rains. Uh, the road is, is like a stream. It just goes right across. And the subject property now has a swell and a drain in it to try to handle some of the water that it receives. Uh, this is, uh, a very, very wet area. And it's just, uh, it's, it's not able to, uh, you would seem to think, uh, to support. Uh, what's being proposed, the, just the size of it compared to the dwelling, which is a one-story. And here we want to add an accessory built, that's two stories and, uh, and, uh, for the most part is larger.
The, well, the footprint, the, the roof area is essentially the same of the proposed garage versus the existing garage.
The roof, I'm glad you mentioned the roof. The roof, uh, on the side, on the two-foot side is gonna dump. Or, or spill directly onto the butter.
Which should not be a question, so.
Uh, no water garden, no dry well, no other means of, uh, controlling, uh, stormwater or, or rainwater.
It's a good question, so, um, if you don't, okay, so I will ask Mr. Calderon that question, how they're gonna manage the stormwater.
The roof has an extension, the eve extension, it's, uh, at best it should be flush with the building, at least. It's extending almost to the property line. And it's difficult with the, with the, uh, drawings that we're looking at that are, um, you know, not to scale.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, we, uh, definitely, there is not an engineers or anything, any engineering that has been performed as far as, uh. Uh, requesting a, uh, second floor deck in a, uh. You know, you know, we're in a, uh, we're six hundred property feet from the ocean. Zone.
That's, that's part of the building permit, not necessarily for zoning, but yeah. He'll be looking for all that.
A garage with a deck, that's rather unusual. A garage with three sliders, is that needed? It's. It, it's, uh, hard to say that it's a garage at this point. It's a garage because there's two garage doors. Uh, but an interior stairs, again, is going to, uh, probably make it very difficult to put a car in on the right side.
Okay, we can ask that.
And, uh, we also, when you build a garage, you need, uh, there's, uh, fire rating, uh, breaking on, uh, doors. Steel doors usually or solid core doors, stairway doors, stairwell doors, outside doors. Are these, uh, going to be addressed?
That would be part of the building permit application.
Okay.
Anything else? Cause I, I, um, if not, I mean, you can certainly ask some more in a little bit.
I think that should be enough for now.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Oh, thank you. Well, don't go anywhere yet. Um, so Mr. Calderon, um. Uh, or, um, Ms. Quirk, um, so a couple of things came up. Uh, one is, we'll start with the last first was the, uh, stairs for egress. Um, is there a sufficient room in the garage to have both cars and egress?
Can, can I address that?
Sure. Yep.
Um, the garage currently right now has a back storage area. That's where the stairs would go. So there won't be that storage area, if you will. That's where the stairs were going. So the car can fit in currently with that there.
With the back, okay.
Yes.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I.
And then, uh, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just, I could attest that, I, you know, standard parking space is, uh, eighteen feet deep and this garage will be twenty-four feet deep. So that would allow for plenty of room for a vehicle and, uh, set of stairs in the rear.
And, uh, the width of the twenty-four, there's, there's enough room, um, because you, you obvi-, it, it seems you have a landing on here. So you'll have more than enough room on the one side?
Yes, I, I believe it's standard two-car garage is, uh, twenty-two feet wide and this is two feet wider than that, twenty-four feet wide. That's, that's your typical. Two-car garage width, twenty-four feet.
Okay. And, um, another was, uh, stormwater.
Sure, uh, the stormwater is going to remain exactly the same as it has for the past, you know, eighty-plus years. You've got currently, uh, you know, approximately the same amount of square footage of roof, um, on the existing garage as you'll have in the proposed. So honestly, there's, there's, there's no change. You know, any increase in square footage, as I stated earlier, is, uh, predominantly coming from the deck, which is. In theory, uh, impervious, you know, with the, with the spacing between the, the decking material. Um, so again, really, uh, no change from what's existing.
Mr. Gorman, uh, for, uh, even though this is, there's an existing building there, uh, do we? Consider stormwater on the new structure? Does that have to be contained and controlled?
Yeah, because it's, um, it's gonna be impervious. Engineering department will review it. Uh, be, if it's located within two hundred feet of a wetland or in the flood plain. Um, they would need stormwater management and a soil erosion permit associated with the building permit. So I can't speak as to how that would be engineered, but it would have to be managed and they wouldn't be able to discharge onto the neighbor's property.
Okay, so if it does that now, um, if it discharges on the property now, it can't do that with the new building?
Correct.
Okay. So does that make sense? Uh, Mr. Calderon?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Yes.
You guys okay with that, understanding that you have to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
The, uh, overhang, I know this has come up before, Mr. Gorman, um, but, um, you wanna let us know. What do we do in considering overhangs as part of the?
So, they're, they're allowed twelve inches for an architectural projection and that being. Not being considered part of the structure or within the setback or requirement relief from that. So I don't see the dimension on here and it's not to scale, so perhaps. Perhaps there could be a maximum dimension of twelve inches maybe provided. But that's the most that they would be allowed.
Okay, and does that, that's the architectural projection, so that doesn't count a gutter per se? So if it was a four-by-five gutter on there, it wouldn't count that?
Correct.
Okay. And, uh, is that part of your designs? Ms. Quirk or, or Mr. Calderon, is that the expectation?
To put gutters, you mean?
No, they, they, just to say on, uh, the two elevations at least. Uh, that you're not projecting from the wall plane more than a foot.
Yeah, I don't believe it is. I mean, I, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I, I believe we're in that compliance or we will be.
You, you, you have to be.
Yeah, I mean, we'll do, yeah, of course.
Okay, okay. So, uh, and was there anything else brought up by Mr. Hess that, that you wanted to address in terms of, uh, the garage?
Um, yeah, I made a, a couple of notes. I mean, basically what I wanted to say was alternatively, you know, if, if this were denied. Then the existing garage will stay there, one point six feet from the property line and one point nine feet from the side property line. So really, again, we're, we're taking a, a, less than ideal or a bad situation, making it better. Uh, we are improving, um, on the existing and also his other comments regarding, uh, wetlands, that's a wetland area. There is not a, a wetland or a perimeter wetland where the garage is. There is a wetland complex on the other, on the easterly side of Surfside Avenue. Um, and also on the northerly side of Browning Street, which again, as, uh, Mr. Hess mentioned, there is. A, uh, a swale, actually it's a, a town maintained swale, I believe, um, that is on, uh, Ms. Quirk's property. And, uh, during, you know, again, this is all on the other side of the, of the, um, of the house from where this garage activity is happening. So it's sort of unrelated.
So was that, was that all you you?
Yeah.
You had notes for?
That's all I have, yeah.
Okay. So, uh, the other, the other correspondences were, um, from just have to get there. Uh, was Mr. de Blasio, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um. For some reason, I do not have that open anymore, so, um. Let's see. Sorry. Okay, so Mr. de Blasio is, uh, to the south?
That's correct, south side.
And again, his concerns are and I asked if Mr. de Blasio was here, but he didn't, he didn't respond, right? So we kind of went through some of the things that that he was concerned about. But it is your testimony that, uh, you're getting farther away from both both property lines and, uh, that the, um, the shower isn't part of our consideration at this point. So, um, I'm not sure if I've, if I've, if I've captured everything. Mr. Calderon, do you, go ahead.
If I may, you did just say, um, that we're, um, our testimony is that it's getting further from both property lines. It's actually not the case. I just want to, we're getting further from the rear property line on the de Blasio side. We're staying the same on the the side, sideline. Yep. Want to clear that up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hess has raised his hand again.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Mr. Hess.
Uh, my request is that I I don't know if you realize when you received our notice for the revised plans and the revised hearing that the post office was unable to deliver until, uh, it was sent on the 2nd of December, received on the 7th of this month. And that does not leave a lot of time. I'm going to request again that our continuation due to COVID-19, due to the holidays, due to the short notice, there are other, uh, in the area, the 200 foot area that maybe would have liked to have commented. And it's just a very difficult time of the year to be, um, considering such a large request. This is a 75 to $100,000 project, I would imagine.
Is it, um, some of the other objectors, uh, from preview or the other correspondences that that you're concerned about that they didn't have time?
I'm I'm concerned that even other abutters, there's quite a few abutters. There are seasonal, uh, uh, these are summer homes, most of them.
Okay. Um, okay, well, uh, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, have either of you, uh, of the applicants heard from, uh, the Fontaines? At all, the ones that you're closest to?
You you know, I actually spoken with him, um, several times, uh, during this application process, uh, on another matter. And he has not raised any concern with me.
They're both, they're both surveyors.
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, of these, uh, other letters, uh, from Hurson Yenek, uh, Tolks and and Tolksen and the Carlson letters. Again, Jessica, do do we have those in files? They're still pertinent to this, obviously, because even though it was before the change.
Yes, we still have everything.
And, um, I don't know if they were, were they in our packet?
They were in the packet, but they're also online.
Great.
Do you want me to read to read the first ones?
Please, yes.
So, um, August 14th from Mr. Hess, um, he's stating that he's opposed to the demolition of the existing garage and constructing a larger garage. He's a property owner of raw land, uh, within 150 feet of the proposed structure. And he's concerned about the flood zone. So that was August 14th, 2020. August 17th, 2020, um. He is still opposed to the construction of a two car garage with a second level, um, with full dormers, a bathroom with shower question mark, um, a deck extension, um, and he's concerned about the variance request for, um, two feet of.
CRM C and EM, do they have to bring in on this?
And then, um, I have a letter from, uh, Mara Hurson Yenek and Marcia Toxen. They're the owners of 60 Browning Street, which is directly across the street. That says we we do not object to the rebuilding of the garage. However, we object to the scale of the project and are specifically concerned about the addition of a second story that includes a family recreation room, a bathroom and deck. Uh, August 18th, there is a letter from, uh, David Carlson. He's the owner of 50 Browning Street, which is across the street from the proposed garage. As far as I know, this is a non-conforming lot in a flood zone with less than two feet clearance of the neighbors in the rear and to the right of the proposed structure. So in closing, I'm opposed to granting a variance on the above above property. Uh, Richard DB, uh, de Blasio on August 18th, um, he's basing his objection as someone within the past year, um, that he he's saying that his family has lived there for five generations, um. Currently, the building located at 59 Browning Street is encroaching on our property. Um, he's engaged to surveyor. Uh, he's concerned about the, um, proposed demolition and new construction with a second floor and two garage bays that it will not conform with the lot coverage. And he thinks that it would be building out of scale in the neighborhood. Um, and then it says, thirdly, the proposed new construction building is also exceeding allowable setback. A building of this scope, I suggest must re- must meet the six foot rear setback requirements. And it's one, uh, one foot nine inches from the property line. Uh, in summary, and with respect for this construction objective, but more importantly for our property rates, currently, we have a building that is encroaching our property line. A building proposed of zoning approved will exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage. And a building, if zoning approved, will significantly exceed allowable setbacks to our property line. And then that's all of the original batch of them. You're muted.
And we just had these, uh, we reviewed, uh, Mr. Hess's newer one and Mr. de Blasio's newer one as well. Okay. So, uh, hearing those, um, I want to, uh, see how board members, if they have questions, um, or or based on these two things or 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 two opposing views.
I I I have one question, Mr. Chairman, Rick Jerzak. Just just for the record, uh, Mr. Calderon or Ms. Quirk, just tell us why the building cannot, the garage cannot be moved closer to the house or closer to Browning Street to lessen, uh, the the variance request.
Sure, um, it can't be moved closer to the existing house because that would interfere with the, uh, or or would, you know, encroach on the minimum setback required from the existing septic system. It's an above ground, bottomless sand filter type of septic system. You can see there on the plan. Um, and then it's, uh, can't be slid. I don't believe it can be slid any closer to the road because of the front setback. Um, I know that there's a provision in there that says it can get as close as the existing house. Bear with me.
So you, so you'd have to get a variance, you're saying, to the
That's correct.
Closer to the road. And and tell me, what what is the minimum requirement for the to, for the distance from the septic system?
All right, it's above, I've got to go through the regs in my head here. It's an above ground system and we've got a foundation that won't have. Uh, I've got to look at the regs. I believe it's 10 feet, but I do want to confirm that. Let me, if you don't mind, I can do that now. I don't know if that's appropriate.
Yeah, well, that's fairly important to hear.
Sure, okay, yeah. In the meantime, do you have a?
That's my only question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do you want, you want us to give you a minute and and see if other board members have a question?
Please, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Um, are you, are you okay with that, Mr. Jerzak?
Yeah, oh, God, yes, of course.
Uh, any other board members have, uh, questions, um, from Ms. Quirk or or, uh, we'll hold off on Mr. Calderon, um, give him a chance to fill this out or answer it. Any other questions from Ms. Quirk, uh, relative to the construction?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
We talked earlier about, uh, egress with the staircase. Is there enough room, uh, given the width, if if there are two cars in it? Cause it is a two car garage, so with two cars, what's the width on the sides for for egress?
Sorry, let me see.
Oh, did you ask that of Mr. Calderon or or Ms. Quirk?
Whoever can answer.
Shelley, do you happen to have a response for that one while I'm looking at this other?
I don't, I'm not sure, what's the question as far as a two car garage?
Well, with with two vehicles in in the garage, what kind of width is available for egress, um, on the sides of the of the vehicles?
Sure.
I think it's three feet.
And it looks like it's 12 feet from the existing septic?
That's correct, yeah. And, um, yeah, to to that, to your question, um, the proposed garage is 24 feet wide. You know, a standard parking space is nine feet wide. So 24 minus nine, minus nine is six. Um, I'm looking at those stairs. I don't see a dimension on them, but there is six feet of space to work with. So, you know, let's, let's say that the the stairs are, uh, 42 inches wide. That still leaves two and a half feet of clearance between the front of the vehicle and the stairs. So there should in theory be plenty of room.
And as far as the footprint goes, the footprint when you is the same of the existing structure, which includes that sort of overhang?
That's correct. The lean to, both the lean to and the overhang, yep.
And is it sitting on a slab right now?
It is.
And that slab is not going to be changed or anything?
Uh, it'll be replaced.
So, okay.
Yeah, it'll be replaced, yeah, it's it's in poor condition.
It looks like the overhang is on, is on some kind of footing. But you're saying the slab extends the entire width?
Okay, uh, the overhang, I am not sure. Shelley, can you speak to that?
Yes, are you, the foundation of it, you mean? It's a wooden, it's, I don't know if there's cement slab underneath. I know what we walk on is wo- is wood. So I don't recall if there's cement, if it's a foundation underneath it or not.
Yeah, it looks like it's sitting on some kind of posts or something. Or maybe blocks. Okay.
The foundation that's currently there, it all has to be redone. It's all cracked and broken and uneven.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels, you have any questions for the applicants?
I have no questions.
Okay.
Did, um, Mr. Kegnet, did we ever get an answer on that closeness?
I'm ready to read the the regs to you now, if you'd like. Um, the required distance from a septic to a structure is 25 feet, which may be reduced to 15 feet with no foundation drain. Um, it may also be reduced further to eight feet where a foundation slab elevation, pile foundation or basement floor elevation is higher than the invert of the distribution lines in the leach field, which is not the case here. This is a raised septic system. So the invert of the leach field is higher than the slab elevation. Um, certainly of of the proposed garage and also probably of the, uh, of the of the wood frame, you know, the existing dwelling. Um, so 15 feet would be the minimum required setback. Uh, it's, it's, it's 12 feet already, uh, existing and proposed or, uh, yeah, about 12 feet existing and proposed. So it it's already too close. It's allowed because of the existing development of the property, but it can't be moved any closer without a variance from DEM.
Mr. Rosen, you have questions?
None, other than I already asked.
So is there anyone else in, uh, the audience that wishes to speak on this petition? Uh, and Jessica, could you remind them how to make themselves known?
Sure, so if you're on a computer, you're going to hit the raise hand function. If you're calling in by phone, it's going to be star nine to raise hand and star six to mute and unmute. And Mr. Hess has raised his hand again.
Yes, okay, Mr. Hess.
Just needs to unmute.
Uh, I was in my letter request that the, uh, at least some of the committee, the, uh, some of the, uh, uh, ZB, our, uh, members visit the site. And, uh, I would also, if the building official has confined time in his schedule because this is a, uh, difficult, uh, site to work with. And now you just brought up the issue with the septic and here we are trying to put a two bay garage uh, closer to the septic, uh, to the bottomless filter than is allowed.
That's, that's not up to us is to
Yeah, that's coastal then.
Yep, that's coastal.
So we
So, but we understand that that you're not really supposed to make it any closer, um, than it already exists.
May I jump in there? I do have the, uh, thank you, um, the CAD drawing here open in front of me. We are getting further away from the existing septic by point three of a foot. Approximately four inches further away.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment, Mr. Kegnetta from Rick Jerzak. Mr. Hess, I did visit the site, so at least one member has looked.
Thank you.
I have, I have also visited the site, that's Bill Rosen.
Uh, Tom Daniels, uh, I have also visited the site twice.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, anything to add, Mr. Hess?
Not at this time, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else, uh, from the applicants in terms of, uh, testimony?
Nothing from me.
And Jessica, oh, great, thank you. And Jessica, did anyone else raise their hand?
No one else has raised their hand.
Um, so, um, let's, uh, did we, would we need to, uh, vote to close public comment if we just have a discussion about this? No, okay, so, uh, let's, let's close public comment, um, and, uh, go around Mr. Bit a bit. Mr. Daniels, how how are you feeling about this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing is going to change the fact that this is a non-conforming, um, piece of property, non-conforming structures. It's, I mean, without tearing everything down and starting over, you'd still be non-conforming because that's just the way the lot is.
It would be a great service, not, not only to the community, uh, or to the owner, I should say, but to the community to have a new garage on a site, because if you've been there and looked at it, it is, uh, i- i- it's dilapidated. It, it, it's in total disrepair, I, I would say. So I think what the applicant has proposed to do, based on the constraints that she has, is perfectly acceptable. She is, uh, in fact, increasing the setback on one side and, uh, doing everything she can to keep the footprint exactly the same, not moving any closer to the septic. Um, same basic footprint, except she had testified, I know, earlier, in, uh, one of the earlier hearings that she has, uh, a family and the family, uh, children need a place to play uh, when it's rainy and when they can't go to the beach and thus the need for the recreation area upstairs. So I, I really have no, despite the objections, um, most of what I see in the objections are going to be washed out in a building permit. And in soil and erosion and, and other venues, not in ours. As far as I'm concerned, uh, I would grant the petition. I don't have any, any difficulty with it at all.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. How are you feeling about Mr. Jurzak?
Yeah, I think that if the, uh, if the present garage is not there, I might feel different. But I, I, I kind of agree with Mr. Daniels on this. I am a little bit concerned about something Mr. Daniel said. And maybe Ms. Goyens can answer this for us, but there was prior testimony. If there was prior testimony, who, who, uh, did we, did everybody here hear that testimony? What testimony are we talking about?
Well, let's, uh, this is Amy. Mr. Daniels, can you confirm?
There was a, um, it was, th- this matter was heard originally. And it was continued and we did hear some preliminary testimony. And I believe, and Ms. Quirk can, can restate that testimony if she wishes, uh, that she had some family members and they were concerned about rainy days, thus the need for the, uh, recreation room upstairs. I re, I distinctly recall that testimony. And whether we make it a part of this particular record, uh, or not, uh, I, I do recall the testimony and it has an effect on, on me from what I heard.
I think, uh, this is Amy. You know, I think it can be, as I said at the beginning, we're considering it a new hearing. Obviously, it's, it's the same application for all intents and purposes. Um, now that we've clarified what the testimony is, was, everyone here has heard it, and I think you can take it into consideration for what it's worth.
Okay.
Would you ask, you, you good, Richard?
Yeah, I'm set.
Okay. How are you feeling, uh, Mr. Charkwick? Uh, can't hear you.
Um, I, I concur. I mean, I, the concerns that I would have, I think will be flushed out in other venues. Um, and yeah, I think if this, the existing structure wasn't there, I'd feel differently. Um, the fact that it's the same existing footprint, um, doesn't really have a adverse impact that doesn't already exist. So I, I, I would, I would probably grant this one.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen?
Uh, yes, I was at the first hearing and I'm here now. I can confirm what, uh, Mr. Daniel said uh, about the fact that Ms. Quirk, uh, had a family, uh, the house is very small. She needs for their, them to have someplace to go. I am a little concerned about the, uh, the size of the structure and the fact that it's going to overwhelm the house in some regard. And, uh, maybe bigger than some of the, uh, other houses and, uh, attached facilities with other properties. But, uh, having visited down there and seen the, uh, condition of the, the present garage and the lean-to and all that type of stuff, um, I'm willing to go along with this as, uh, improving the situation and, uh, would be fine with the setback, although it is rather close on both sides as such. So I have no objection.
Thank you, sir. So, um, I, I, I do agree, uh, with, with my colleagues, um, that, uh, and I also would say that, that the area had evolved, um, in a, in a, in a very inconsistent way over its lifetime, uh, the whole area. Um, so there is a, there's a lot of inconsistency in terms of setbacks, in terms of how many, uh, how clustered the buildings are, in terms of how close they are to their neighbors. Um, so there already is, uh, a significant amount of, um, you know, uh, both open space between buildings and then, and then there are clusters. So, um, and then the fact that, that we're not seeing much different, uh, in terms of the placement of the buildings, um, doesn't really, I, I, I seem to, I don't think it's a huge effect. Um, and then plus the condition, uh, of the existing. So, um, I do have, uh, slight concerns, um, about the height. Um, but the height, we're not here for the height, um, even though it is a dimensional variance. Um, you know, I think, uh, it, it still is consistent with buildings around it. So, um, I guess I, I, I wouldn't have a, a, an issue if someone were to, uh, approve, make a motion to approve. So, um, is there, is there anyone else that, that wants to make some comments or, um, is willing to, uh, make a, uh, motion at this point?
I'll, I'll make a motion if you'd like, Rick Jurzak. Okay. All right, I make a motion to approve the petition of Michelle Quirk, uh, with regard to premises located at 59 Browning Street, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, assessors map 96 dash one lot 32. Okay. What the, the petition basically is asking for is relief from the side yard requirements. And also relief from the, uh, coverage, percent coverage on the lot itself. Okay? Uh, what the petition is asked for is that the, uh, let me see, the, uh, with regard to the left side property line, it will be located one foot. Okay, nine inches. I'm not sure. Is that 1.9 feet or is that one feet, nine inches?
1.9 feet.
Okay, 1.9 feet from the left property line. Okay. Uh, the required setback on that side yard is 15 feet, so relief of 13.1 feet. Point one feet is requested. The garage will also be located four feet from the side yard in the rear of the garage, which is considered a side yard. Okay? A relief of 11 feet is requested. And further, the petition is requesting, okay, the proposed lot coverage will be 24.6% with the maximum lot coverage allowed by the ordinance is 20%. So therefore, 4.6% is requested. Okay? All right, I, before I forget, I want to make a, a part of this motion. I want to refer to the submitted plans, the first one. Uh, proposed conditions plan in the town of South Kingstown, Rhode Island, AP 96 dash one lot 32 dash 59 Browning Street, prepared for Michelle Quirk, April 13th, 2020, scale one inch equals 20 feet revised August 20, 2020, revised November 10, 2020 by South County Survey Company. And also, I want to make part of the, uh, motion, okay? Uh, the drawing submitted, okay, by W G Carpentry LLC Windsor, Connecticut. Uh, and they are dated 11/13/2020 and it is just one sheet and is labeled P1. Okay? Now, with regard to the people who testified, we had Michelle Quirk testify. She gave us various information with regard to what she's asking for and also with regard to the site itself. We also had detailed, uh, testimony by Mr. Calderon, the land surveyor. Okay, again, he gave us, uh, much information with regard to what, uh, the petition is asking for and the property itself, and the property itself. Okay? There are a number of objectors, okay? Uh, the chairman, uh, read letters by, uh, at least two of those objectors into the, uh, record, I think it was three, or summarized those, those, uh, those letters. And, uh, uh, further, uh, Mr. Bert Hess testified, okay, by telephone, okay? Uh, with regard to his objections that he has also submitted, uh, I believe at least, uh, three letters in opposition, uh, to the project, to the petition. Okay? I, uh, would ask the board to find that the hardship, okay, is due to the, uh, the nature of the lot itself and the, uh, physical location of the septic system on the lot itself. All right? Uh, both the configuration and the size of the lot. Okay? I would also ask the board to find that the, uh, the condition there is not the result of any action on the part of Michelle Quirk. The house has been there since 1930, I believe, or 35. And the garage is probably close to that age. All right? I would ask the board to find, uh, that granting of this petition will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Or, uh, to, for, for that matter, as many of our, our, uh, members of the panel stated, this will greatly improve the area, okay, due to the dilapidated condition of the existing garage and certainly make it safer for everybody as well. Okay? I ask the board to find that this is the release relief that is necessary. Okay? Uh, please note that it's on, it's, it's on the same footprint as the existing garage. They're not making something that's outrageously large here. Okay? The last thing I would ask the board to make note of that, uh, if this petition is not granted, it will result in more than a mere inconvenience, okay? To, to Ms. Quirk, because she will have to live with the present dilapidated condition of the garage. Okay? Two last comments. Uh, I, I would state that I see no public purpose that I could come up with, which would, uh, would justify denying this petition. Uh, the last thing I would like to comment is that it'd make a condition of this, uh, uh, approval that the roof angler hangs, uh, shall not exceed more than 12 feet from, I guess, the foundation. 12 inches, I'm sorry. 12, 12 inches, not 12 feet. Yeah, heck of a building. Okay, and ha, all that being said, okay, I ask that the petition be granted.
Thank you, Mr. Jurzak. Uh, is it, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Uh, any discussion by the board? Hearing none? Mr. Jurzak?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Charkwick? Sound, uh?
Hi.
I know. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kegnetta, I, motion passes. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
So, next, uh, we have the petition of Jacqueline French, uh, care of Leslie Mahoney. Um, and Ms. Goyens, did you want to address this before I read it in to the record?
Yes, this is Amy. Um, this one, uh, was continued, I believe, from just last month for an amended notice. There was also a notice issue on this one, I believe, related to dormers. No new documents were submitted. Um, but we should start from scratch on this one as well, um, so that we can consider um, the impact of the proposed dormers.
Okay, fair. So with that, um, this is the petition of Jacqueline French care of Leslie Mahoney, uh, 6 Bouvier Road in Marblehead, Mass. 01945. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is proposing to construct a 288-square-foot covered deck, 150-square-foot covered deck on the west side of the dwelling. The roof will be extended over the existing 72-square-feet deck located on the south side. The exterior stairs located on the east side of the dwelling will be removed and replaced with a 48-square-foot covered stair and landing. The west side covered decks, uh, will be located seven feet from the property line and 2.8 feet from the side property line. The east side covered stairs and landing will be located eight feet from the property line. Additionally, the second-story roof will be modified to incorporate a dormer. The required front setback is 25 feet. The relief of 18 feet is requested. Uh, the required side setback is 10 feet, a relief of 7.2 feet is requested. Um, the lot size is 10,229 square feet. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance 401, which is our, our schedule of dimensional regulations and section 907 for our standards of belief. The owner of the property is Jacqueline M. French for premises located at 14 Eldred Court, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, assessors map 57 dash four, lot 218, and is zoned R10. And Jessica, could you just, uh, remind us what applications we have or what, what documents we have with this application?
Sure, just give me one second. All right, so we have an application signed and dated October 13th, 2020. We have the owner authorization form signed and notarized October 13th, 2020. We have the South Kingstown web GIS image. We have a zoning sketch prepared by Stephen Pinch, P L S, dated October 2020. We have plans and elevations prepared by Mahoney Architects dated October 12th, 2020. We have a radius map, a 200-foot of butters list, the legal notice and certified mailings. Um, we also have, uh, the revised legal notice along with the proof of mailing and affidavit of mailing. And then we have one correspondence from Melissa Sheridan and Ryan Light. And that's it.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, and, uh, who is here tonight, uh, for this petition?
Uh, we both are, Jackie and Leslie are both here and we will post.
And, uh, we'll start with you, Ms. French. Um, could you please spell, uh, spell your name, please?
Uh, Jacqueline, J A C Q U E L Y N, French, F R E N C H.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And, uh, Ms. Mahoney? Could you please, uh, spell, spell your name?
Leslie Mahoney, L E S L I E, Mahoney, M A H O N E Y.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, excellent. So go ahead.
Um, okay, so, uh, hi again. Uh, I'll just, I'll recap, uh, you know, kind of where we, um, where we, uh, left off last time. So there are a few things that we want to do in terms of renovating the house. Excuse me. Um, our lot is, I believe, considered conforming, but our house is non-conforming because of where it sits on the lot. The property is divided in a bizarre sort of way and the house sits on like the smallest part of the property, which means that pretty much anything that we want to do in terms of renovations or, you know, improvements would need to be run by you for a variance. So, um, I'll start with the, with a few things that we want to do on the, east side of the house and then I will throw to Leslie for the remainder. Um, so on the east side of the house, we want to, the first thing is we want to add a dormer. We, we want to, uh, um, to build, um, a second bathroom upstairs, a full bathroom. to build a second bathroom upstairs, a full bath. Right now, we only have one, and that's in our bedroom. So for, you know, guests who come and visit, we really need to have a second bathroom, a second full bath upstairs. So in order to do that, we need to expand the dormer. The dormer would be expanded by four feet in one direction and three and a half feet on either side, north to south. That's the first thing. The second thing is the stairs at the front of the house are dilapidated at best at this point. So we want to remove those and build something that is, you know, to code for one and, and also, you know, a nicer set of stairs in the front of the house. And then we also want to include a little roof extension to cover the stairs for weather, you know, weather coverage. So those are the three things, the dormer, the new stairs and a little roof to cover the stairs. So that's at the front of the house. And then around the backside, which is the west side, we also plan to expand the kitchen by about three and a half feet. And then with that, we wanted to create some outdoor space for us, so I'll toss to Leslie to talk about the decking that will go around the back of the house.
Right, so on the west side, as Jackie's saying, we're expanding a deck portion that comes off from the dining room and then wraps in front of the kitchen and around to the existing mudroom. We feel that this corner porch is, it's in keeping with many of the homes in the neighborhood. And it really links all the doors together, so you don't have to go down a deck and down a set of stairs and then go up another set of stairs in through the mudroom. The mudroom is really the used entrance to the house from the driveway. So in order to really connect this to the existing, to the new deck, we'd like to cover that as well and provide a wider set of stairs up to this deck. It really makes the whole house flow on the exterior as well as the interior and brings the stairs and the deck up to code. I just, I'd like to also say that we're really planning to match all the existing roof lines, playing up the whole traditional bungalow detailing on the existing house.
Okay, great. Okay, board members, you have any questions of the Upkins? Nothing yet, okay. Do you guys have, do you have anything to add to this? I know. If not, I mean, we can sort of get into some of the concerns of, of the neighbors, or one of the concerns. We have from, received on November sixth of twenty twenty from Melissa Sheridan, that is an objection to the petition for fourteen Eldred Court. They received the public hearing regarding the petition for Jacqueline French for the property. In advance of the hearing, under the ordinance, we wanted to share our objection to the relief that Ms. French is requesting. Their property is located at two fifty-eight Kenyon Ave. And their sideline abuts the subject property. And the petition would permit a covered deck to be built within two point eight, or two feet, eight inches to the lot line with the eve of the roof coming closer than that two foot eight inches. And they're saying that there's no dimension for that. We have two young children that play in the yard daily and their concern about the proposed structure is invasive to their privacy and their children's security. So they're asking us to reject the petition as designed to protect their sideline. And is Melissa Sheridan or Ryan Light here?
She is, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to allow her to talk, she can un herself.
Yep, if, if you want to add to it, you're more than welcome to. If not, we can see how they respond, but feel free to. Oh yeah, Melissa, yes.
Okay, I'm here with my husband, Ryan Light. We are Jackie's neighbors to the side.
Just one sec, just, just to first, just spell your name for us?
Sure, my first name is Melissa, M-E-L-I-S-S-A, last name Sheridan, S-H-E-R-I-D-A-N.
Okay, and Ryan?
Ryan Light, R-Y-A-N-L-I-G-H-T.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
We do.
Okay, we're assuming your hand is up, but thank you very much. So tell us, if you want to further explain outside of your letter, or?
Sure, I mean, we don't have a lengthy statement prepared necessarily, but you know, it's our understanding that variances are often given in response to a hardship. And we don't really see any hardship here. You know, Jackie clearly has a very good architect that could surely optimize, you know, the side of her existing home where she currently parks her cars and take up that space of a lot rather than, you know, encroaching on our property line. That would completely avoid any sort of adversary position on, on our part. It just seems like there's a lot more options than just this one.
Yeah, okay. Anything to add, or if not, I can sort of, certainly we can ask that of, of them.
Yeah, this is Ryan. You know, I, I spoke with Jackie and, you know, it's, it's twenty feet of eaves, less than two foot eight inches from our fence line. And with the, with the grade and the fact that it's, you know, the grade is pitching down at that point, it's going to be almost two stories off the ground. So, you know, it's, and there's tons of room to the west side. And if they're pouring more foundation there and all the work is, is going there, it's like, why not just optimize the west side of the house rather than really putting, you know, twenty feet of deck up against our fence, that's all.
Okay, well, and who would like to take that, Ms. French or Ms. Mahoney?
Well, I can address it first. The reason we're adding the covered deck on that side as well is, is one, we, there's an existing mudroom on that side. This is the, what are we saying here, the south, the south side of the property? So there's an existing mudroom there and we're trying to come in the existing door using the existing deck. So we're just covering that part of the deck. Jackie's land also slopes down on the west side. So as we, if we were to encroach more on that side, it gets higher and higher off the ground.
So.
We'd like to work with as much of the existing house as we can and really not have to rebuild the existing house when what we're trying to do is build deck.
So if, if we're looking at the zoning sketch, you're, the existing deck to the, am I assuming that's the south? The existing deck that has, that's two point eight feet away, that is not changing? Or is that, is there a roof going over?
It is getting longer towards the west side. There is existing deck there, but we're making it a little longer so it connects with the deck on the west, the new deck on the west.
But that's not, you're not getting any closer to the side?
No, in fact, we're actually getting further away because the, the lot line slopes at that point.
And, and the existing deck, like, so is there a roof over that, that existing deck already?
No.
Are you putting a roof over that existing deck?
Yes, that is the plan to cover it.
Okay, so, so you're covering that deck and then the proposed deck as well has a roof over it?
Yes, harsh, part of it.
Part of it. So now, is your roof extending more than the one foot past the existing footing?
No, the eaves are, the eaves are ten inches.
Ten inches, okay. And that's in conformance with the existing building? Because you mentioned that the building is, what did you say?
Yeah, we're, we're just copying the existing eaves.
Okay, it's a bungalow, you said, yes?
Yes.
So, okay, so, so you are, I mean, you're putting a roof over it, but you're not technically getting any closer when it comes to your footings, when it comes to your footprint.
Right.
And, and what of? So. So really, I mean, you're, you're talking about putting more dormers on that side of the house, but you're not, I mean, so if we're looking at footprint alone and the changes to it, we see it, essentially, we're seeing it on this zoning sketch, right? The proposed as well as the existing, this is what you're doing for your footprint?
Yes.
So if, if we're just talking footprint, we're talking to the east, you're putting on steps. Those are, and then to the west, you're adding the deck, which is also affecting a bit of the south, but you're, you're not going any closer to the south than the existing deck.
That's right, yes.
So, okay, board members, do you have questions relating to the objection and explanation?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Charwood.
I recall one of the reasons for the objection was the security of the children. And I'm just curious as to how this impacts their security.
Okay, so that, that's for either the Sheridan or?
It's, it's not necessary, we're very friendly with, with Jackie and John and we'd like to keep it that way, but you know, just if they ever sell the house or it becomes a, you know, Airbnb or it's rented to college kids, you know, it's, it's just right up against our yard. You know, it's, it's not necessarily.
It's not the current owners that are an issue whatsoever in terms of security. It's just imagining into the future if that house may have different owners. It's just really, really close. And with the dormers kind of like looming over the yard, it's just, it's just going to be a lot.
And, and I also do want to say, Leslie, to your point about reusing the existing mudroom, you know, I looked at the plans and you're moving a bathroom right in that exact same space. And so, you know, if, if you're moving everything around there, you know, why couldn't you just flip the bathroom and, and the door? And, you know, it seems that you've got a lot of options and this is just probably the, the path of least resistance.
And just, just to clarify, you, you can ask me and then I can ask them, but
Okay.
I'm sure, Leslie, I'm sure you heard them, so, so if you're, if you don't mind, go ahead and address that.
We have explored other options for where to put the entrance. In, I, I mean, it, you know, it all comes together. There's a kitchen that's getting expanded, there's the bathroom, there's the mudroom. And so we've explored the, the different ramifications of all of those. And this really is the best one is to continue in the side where the existing door is. It's the least impact for everything.
Any other questions, board members, or?
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Rosen. To the east side of the house, there are some proposed steps, is that the front entrance?
That's technically the front entrance.
And so to the south, where the mudroom is and the existing deck and entrance, that is going to be the main entrance, is that correct?
Well, the driveway is off the west side of the house. So as you come in from the car, you're coming in onto the deck next to the mudroom rather than going out into the street and back to the main entrance at the east. You'd have to go onto the street to get to the east entrance from the driveway.
Yeah, when I, when I visited the other day, couldn't really tell where the front entrance was. I now see.
Yeah, it's sort of, it's sort of hidden, you know, it's really only used if you're going for a walk through the neighborhood and then you might come in that east side entrance. But I think making the stair a little bit larger and covering it will give it a little bit of presence.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, may I ask, what's, Ms. Sheridan, a question?
Yep, yeah, of course, please.
Ms. Sheridan, I'm looking at the zoning sketch and, but I'm not, and I'm seeing your lot, but I don't know where your house is located.
Our, our house is to the south, southwest, so, I'm sorry, the southeast.
To the southeast, and what's the relationship with the, the house that's under, asking the request here?
I don't understand what, what's the relationship?
Where is your house located with respect on this zoning sketch?
The, the two houses were originally one property and they're kind of carved apart with, you know, minimal setbacks.
I see. So there were two houses on the same property?
Yeah, and then I think it was the late sixties, they were divided up. Okay.
The, the previous, if I can jump in, the, the previous owners, not Ryan and Melissa, but the previous owners had at one point owned both houses and then they are the ones who divided the property in the, as it is now.
And if I could add one more thing, Melissa and Ryan's house is down Eldred and then you turn onto Kenyon, their house is accessed off of Kenyon Road and faces Kenyon.
Oh, okay, okay, Kenyon's off to the east.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You know, expanding on, Rick Jurzak, you're expanding on Mr. Rosen's question. How far is the, how far is your house away from this house? This is Ms. Ms. Sheridan, how far, or, or, or Mr. Light, how far by way of footage is your house away from, what's the distance between your house?
I would estimate it's about thirty feet.
Thirty feet at the closest point? Okay.
Yeah, by a rough estimate.
Do we have?
Any trees, are there trees or anything in between?
Yes.
Is it heavily tree?
It is, but where this deck is being built, there's, there's a gap in the trees.
That's it for me, Mr. King.
Do we have the aerial photo from the neighborhood to look at and measure? Because I could be wrong, but I think it's a lot more than thirty feet.
Well, from what I could see based on the map, Google and the map you submitted, is that it seems as if the, well, and, and folks can correct, correct me if I'm wrong. So your existing deck, your proposed deck that, that, or the existing deck that you're proposing to build off of, if you were to stand out that deck and, and look into, you would be looking into their yard, not into the house. You'd have to be looking to the east, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So these additions aren't necessarily adjacent to the, the, the structures.
Can you put your cursor where the deck is off the mudroom? That's the wrap, yeah, and then if you turn to the right.
Up a little bit, yeah.
Yep, up a little bit.
Right above the numbers is basically where.
That's the deck, right there, the wraparound, exactly. And their house is up above.
Wait, it's a little, the wraparound would, like, the cursor is down a little far, right? Like, the, the wraparound is, yeah, there you go, yeah. That would be about right.
So looking at that, that, the property in, from, from this view. So looking at that, that, the property in, from, from this view, there really isn't a, um, in, unless the house were moved all the way back. There's not much you can do, like you, you, even if you were to build off of the west side of the house where you're putting your proposed deck and you were to intensify that part of the house, you're still going to be in proximity to the adjacent lot. Um, if you were to build all the way to the end of the property or end of the, of the existing house, you, it looks like you'd still be about twelve feet away. Is that right?
About right, actually. Yeah. Eleven. I think it's even a little less.
Which would still not be in conformance.
Well, that's considered, I'm sorry, can I talk, I'm not sure, can I?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go for it. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I believe that it's been determined that, so Eldred is considered the front. What's parallel to Eldred all the way in the back is considered the back. And then everything else is considered the sides. So that whole weird shape that kind of comes around the house, I believe is considered a side, which means it's a ten-foot setback.
Which is ten, okay. So you technically you would be within conformance if you just built off of the house and didn't mess with the deck, the existing deck and the side.
Mm-hmm.
Technically, okay. Okay. Does everyone understand sort of the, the orientation of everyone now?
I would, um, I just, I wanna, um, just go back to one, one quick point about, we did, Leslie and I actually did investigate the possibility of moving the door, that the side door on the south side to the west side. But in order to do that, that would, well, there are a few issues. One of the, one of them is we'd have to completely change the, the kitchen and make the kitchen extension a lot bigger in order to be able to, you know, walk in, have the bathroom near the mudroom and then turn into the kitchen. It just, it changes that design completely and it, it just, it makes it more, it makes it bigger. We'd have to make the kitchen a lot bigger. The, the three and a half feet that we're looking at right now would not be enough to accommodate the, the door where you'd have to enter the kitchen.
So in, in, in your renovations, is that, is that mudroom, half bath, uh, kitchen all being affected in it? Or, or some of the, the uses of those spaces kind of staying the same?
They're all in, we're flipping a bathroom to the west side, but everything is essentially staying in its same location. The, the mudroom area is the same. It's just getting a little bigger. The kitchen area is staying the same. It's getting three and a half feet bigger. We're just, we're trying to keep everything as close to where it is.
So when Ms. French is talking about the addition, you're talking about that three and a, three foot, four and a half inch
Right.
um, bump out you're doing. Um, so if you were to use that three, uh, that three and change, uh, bump out as your entry, you would have to flip everything around. Your sink would have to go somewhere else and, and other, other uh, features of, of, uh, the kitchen would need to be changed around almost completely.
I think it's the stove side, but yes, yeah, the existing.
Oh, is that the stove side too? Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Board members, um, any other questions for, um, Ms. Sheridan or, or Mr. Light in relative to their correspondence? Okay, um, would you guys like to add anything to Sheridan or, or Mr. Light at this point?
No, I think the only thing I would just say is, you know, I think it's just defining what's the difference between hardship and what's inconvenient. That's all.
Right. Okay, um, anyone else out there, um, want to speak in behalf of this petition? Um, Jessica, could you remind them how they make themselves known?
Sure. So, um, if you're on a computer, you're gonna hover over your name and you can press, uh, raise hand. If you are calling in by phone, it is star nine to raise hand and star six to mute and unmute.
So anyone out there?
No one is there.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else to add, um, in, in terms of, uh, Ms. Mahoney or Ms. French in terms of the petition?
I don't think so.
No.
How's everyone feeling? Mr. Rosen, hi, what are you thinking? Bill? Did he freeze?
He's just muted.
All right. How about, uh, Richard? What are you thinking?
Sorry, I, I'm, I'm muted. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Bill. Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking to myself here. Um, yeah, uh, what I was saying is this is about the only thing that seems to make sense to me. Looking at the Google map, it, it appears that the Sheridan and Lights are rather far away actually, and they have a, a good deal of land, uh, that is to the south of, uh, Mahoney French, uh, house. Uh, so expanding to the south, which is the, the, the main bone of contention here, doesn't seem to do significant, significant damage to, uh, the neighbors as such. And in, in considering that, uh, Sheridan and Light is, is mainly concerned about something that might happen in the future, uh, and particularly considering that this is property was originally one piece of property and, and split in kind of an unusual way. I probably would go along with the, uh, with the setbacks as, as is. I hope you understood that because I was muted in the beginning.
It's probably better the second time, so. No, that's fine. Um, Mr. Jurzak?
I, I, I kind of agree with Mr. Rosen. I, I, if I understand the, on that south side, the existing deck right now, that is there, the smaller portion is two point eight feet away from the property line. And the, the proposed addition is not going to get any closer than two point eight feet from the property line. Uh, you know, I, looking at the, you know, I sympathize with Ms. Ms. Sheridan and Mr. Light, but looking at and weighing this thing and looking at where their house is and looking at the, the, the trees on the, on, on their property from the Google Maps and whatever, and then looking at the, you know, it's, it's the, the house that, uh, that we're talking about that's part of the petition, its location on its lot. I just think this is kind of reasonable and, uh, I, I just don't, uh, I, 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 it would be tough for me to vote against this. Okay, at this point.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. Daniels, how are you feeling?
Well, needless to say, this is a unique, uh, pistol-shaped lot, if you will. And, uh, the location of his existing house, no matter what you do in terms of, um, expanding it for convenience, um, it is going to be within, uh, within the set, uh, within the setbacks. As Mr. Jurzak said, you already have two point eight feet, uh, on one side and that's not going to change. And I was moved by the testimony from Ms. Mahoney that they're trying to keep the character of the existing house with regard to the kitchen, with regard to the mudroom and planning this expansion to move anywhere else on the property, uh, would, would likely require, based on her testimony, would likely require a major overhaul. And I don't think that's fair to the petitioners. So I would have no problem in, uh, in approval.
And last but not least?
I, I, I agree. I mean, I think they have very limited options on this piece of property. It's, it's pretty unique in the way it's laid out, so, um, and it would probably incur significant cost and delay to, uh, to, to, you know, shift it. So I, I would, I would, I would vote to approve this.
Thank you. Um, I mean, I, I would agree with that. I think, um, you know, this is a really unique shaped, uh, lot, um, based on, uh, uh, how they broke it up years ago. Um, ideally, they could have added a little bit more to the, to, to the south side, um, to relieve some of this. Um, but that's not the case. Um, but I do feel that they've, they've gone to the, uh, the direction, um, that has, uh, the least impact, um, to the neighbors. Um, so, uh, would, would someone like to make a, a motion, um, relative to this petition?
Richard, you want me to do it or you want to do it?
It's up to you, Mr. Daniels. Go ahead. I'll let you do it.
Okay. Uh, all right. A motion to approve the petition of, uh, Jacqueline, uh, French and Leslie Mahoney of Marlboro, Massachusetts for dimensional variance under zoning ordinance. The, uh, particular application was already read into the, into the, uh, record by the chairman. And basically we are looking for, um, addition of a second story, uh, dormer. Uh, relief of eighteen feet is required on a front setback. Um, the required is twenty-five release, uh, relief of eighteen is requested. And on the side yard, uh, already existing is a two point eight setback. So the relief of seven point two was requested from the, uh, regulation of ten feet. Uh, the following individuals spoke, uh, on behalf of the applicant and, uh, Ms., uh, French, the applicant, indicated that, um, their desire is to add a dormer on the east side and to add a set of stairs and to cover those stairs on the west side. Uh, the, um, the application is complete with the documentation as read into the record by the administrative assistant, and I pay particular attention to the survey done by Stephen Pinch. And that's dated, uh, October twelfth, two thousand and twenty, because that outlines, uh, in detail what, uh, is being proposed. Uh, Ms. Mahoney testified that the, uh, expansion on the west side of the property will expand the kitchen by three feet and will add some stairs and, uh, and a deck to meet with the existing uh, deck on the south side. Uh, expansion in any other area, uh, would require a redesign of the kitchen and a basic redesign, most likely, from what I could gather in a testimony, a, a major redesign of the existing structure itself. There were, uh, one, uh, party opposed, uh, and that would be Ms. Sheridan and Mr. Light. And, um, they indicated they had some concerns about the, uh, two point eight setback being close to the property, but upon further examination, the board, uh, has determined that, uh, there is, it looks to be sufficient coverage with trees and landscaping and that the, excuse me, the Sheridan and Light home is located quite a distance from, uh, the proposed, uh, addition to this property. With that in mind, uh, we did, uh, we did enter into the record, as I indicated earlier, all the appropriate uh, information and it is all in order. And the site plan of Mr. Pinch is the, uh, determining document, I think, and that's once again dated October twelfth, two thousand and twenty. The board finds that the hardship from which this applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of, of the subject land and structure. This is a pistol-shaped lot, if you will. The house is located in an area that, uh, allows for, uh, limited expansion without, uh, without the need for variance. It's a, a, a unique-shaped lot and, uh, it, it's certainly, uh, not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, not due to a physical or economic, uh, disability of the applicant. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of this applicant and does not result primarily from the desire to realize greater financial gain because, uh, they live in a property, uh, they're gonna, uh, improve the value of the property and the use of the property in particular by, uh, reorienting, reorienting the entrance, uh, to the home, utilizing the existing mudroom and also expanding the kitchen and expanding the bathroom on a second floor with the addition of the dormers. Uh, the general character of the neighborhood will not be impaired because, uh, there are many homes in this neighborhood that are, uh, of the same style or, uh, not of a completely different, uh, style and form. So this would not impact the, uh, the neighborhood at all. As a matter of fact, it'd probably be an addition, uh, to this, certainly to this piece of property and the surrounding properties. Uh, it, it is the least relief necessary because once again, the unique shape of the lot does not allow this applicant to do much beyond, uh, what they have proposed. The board finds that the, uh, owner of the subject, uh, property, the dimensional variances, if it's not granted, would amount to more than a mirror, mirror inconvenience. Once again, because in order to do anything different would require a major overhaul of the existing structure and would, uh, bring a, a, an enormous amount of additional financial, um, responsibility and, and financial impact to the owner. In addition, there was some testimony that the, uh, uniqueness of the property with regard to the elevations, uh, don't allow for these, uh, additions to be made, uh, in areas other, uh, than have been defined. And with that, uh, there are no conditions, uh, on the approval. And with that, I would move, uh, approval of the petition of Jacqueline French and, uh, uh, Ms. Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen? Um, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Mr. Charwick?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, um, everybody doing all right? We don't need a break?
I, I do, but you can go ahead. I can hear you.
We hear you though.
Well, I'm gonna mute you, so.
This, yeah, this is gonna go viral. Um, so next we have the petition of Christine Cohen, uh, care of Edward Ferland of two two five Greenslett Ave, Pawtucket, Rhode Island, zero two eight six one. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is proposing to construct a new single-family dwelling to replace the existing single-family dwelling. The lot is non-conforming by dimension and has reduced setbacks. The new dwelling will be located nineteen foot one or nineteen point one feet from the property line and eight point three feet from the corner side. The required front yard and corner side setback is forty feet. The relief of twenty point nine feet and thirty-one point seven feet respectively is requested. The new dwelling will be located seven point eight feet from the side property line. The required yard setback is twelve feet. The relief of four point two feet is requested. The proposed lot coverage will be seventeen thousand, seventeen hundred and sixty-eight square feet. The maximum allowed lot coverage is fourteen hundred and ninety-four square feet. Relief of two hundred and seventy-four square feet is requested. Lot size is point one seven acres. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance two zero seven. Non-conforming, uh, lots of record building setback requirements. Section four zero one, schedule of dimensional regulations and section nine zero seven are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Christine Cohen for premises located at three two one Succotash Road. Assessor's map eighty-one dash three lot ninety-nine and zoned R eighty. Okay, um, and for this petition, um, Jessica, you wanna, you wanna read them off, what we have for documents? What we have for documents?
Door. Uh, we have an application signed and dated October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. We have the owner authorization form signed and notarized October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. We have a two hundred foot radius map and a butters list. We have a soil erosion control plan slash site plan prepared by Dupree Engineering, Jason Cloud P E, and that was dated October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. We have construction plans, sheets A one point one, A one point two, A one point zero, A two point one, A three point one, A three point two, S one point one, S one point one again, A four point two. Those are prepared by Jeffrey L. Lichten's architect, Christine Cohane. She is the architect on record dated August sixth, two thousand and twenty. Then we have the legal notice, certified proof of mailing and affidavit of mailing. That's it.
Okay, sounds great. And, uh, so who do we have here for this petition?
You. Me, uh, Edward Ferland.
Mr. Ferland, uh, could you please spell your name?
Yep, Edward, E D W A R D, Ferland, F E R L A N D.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. Um, and is it gonna be just yourself, um, talking about this?
I think so.
Okay. Go for it.
As I know.
What would you like to do?
Well, we'd like to take the house down that's there existing. It's, um, if, if you look at the Dupree's, uh, site plan, the existing house is about the same size as what the new dwelling is, other than the garage. The setbacks are pretty much the same. Um, it was built in the thirties and then added on to, and then added on to, and then added on to. So it, it's, it's not able to be made livable for year-round use, which is what they wanna do.
So, uh, Dupree Engineering, um, Jessica, you rock. So, if you can, um, is, can you zoom in to that bottom left corner? I see. So when we're talking, uh, you, you're talking footprint. So the, the dark gray that is surrounding it, there's actually inside of that dark gray of the proposed, there's an existing deck.
Correct.
That almost comes out to the same distance in the front. Or on the, uh, Mittendorf Road, rather?
On, on Mittendorf, it's the same. On the back property line, you see the seven point eight, that's the same. But the garage extends, um, starts where the old house um, ended. So the garage would be additional coverage.
So the garage, um, but it's, it's taking the location, oh no. There is a shed there. Now, you're gonna relocate the shed. I see.
Right.
And you're moving it to the, to the west side of the property, the shed, I'm assuming, right near the septic?
Yep.
Um, okay. So the garage technically is, is the growth of, of the structure.
Correct.
For all intents and purposes. Okay. Okay. Keep going.
Okay, well, it's, it's an existing three-bedroom house. We've got three bedrooms here. The house is, will be a ranch, cottage-style ranch. Um, and then the garage will have, um, a, uh, a room above it, um, like a rec room type thing with a bathroom.
And it's attached?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. What about the property itself? Is there anything, um, that we should be aware of in terms of, uh, wetlands or?
No.
Setback or, or septic locations, anything that's restricting your location?
Uh, I don't think so. Um, we're right off of Succotash and the corner of Succotash and Mittendorf. So we, you are a corner lot. So Mittendorf is not a heavily traveled street. I do believe there's only four or five houses on Mittendorf. And most of them are way past this house.
So it's a very strange property line. So in the sense that, um, the road, Mittendorf seems to come out quite a bit. Um, relative to the property line.
Yes. And, and it's, i- if it's, it's a variable width, so it gets wider and skinnier and it's, and it's, I don't know for sure if it's paved. It might be paved, but only a portion of it. It's not like full width paved street type thing.
So, so technically their, their driveway, um, their hardscape is, is gonna come on to the road hair as, as it's designed here at least.
Yes, um, to reach, to reach the pa- to reach the pavement.
So you, you're setback, I mean, even though it is the, the eight point three feet, visually it could seem more than that.
Yeah, it's gonna be probably closer to twenty, twenty-five feet off the, off the paved area. If you, if you can, I don't know if you can see it, but it's dotted. I do believe that's dotted. The paved area. And, and it, yes.
Look at that. Okay. You're trying my eyes here, but yes, I can see.
I know the feeling. That's why I got a very large screen on my computer.
Well, I, I seem to choose paper and I'm, I'm, I'm regretting that now, but, um, I, I could pull it up. So, okay. So what else do we need to know?
Um, I'm not sure there's anything else. It's pretty simple. I had talked to, uh, well, I didn't. The architect had talked to Wayne and gone over all the setbacks and, and lot coverages and that sort of thing. I thought we had everything covered. And then Wayne left. And so we can't even ask him anything about it.
But meaning, um, but nothing changed in terms of, uh, your expectation, like you weren't sent to zoning because there's a new zoning official.
Right, no.
Okay, okay. No, I, I, I would think, um, certainly if there was a, a concern about, about anything, um, we would know. Uh, okay. Board members, you have questions? And Mr. Ferland?
Yeah, Tom Daniels. Uh, Mr. Ferland, you're, you're the, uh, you're the contractor?
Yes, I am.
Okay. There's no wetlands on a property or wetland setback?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Uh, the rear, the, the, uh, west side of the property shows a, uh, a dotted line that's sort of not squared off with the property. What, what does that represent? I can't quite understand.
The dot, the square dot, that's the septic? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the, you see where the shed is? It's twenty-six point four feet to the rear line. That inter- that intersects a, looks like a triangle. What is, what is that?
Triangle is just bushes.
Bushes, okay, okay. All right.
Cause the, the, the solid line with the, with the dots, that's where the silk fence has gotta go.
Okay. I looked at the, I looked at the building. It's a, it's a pretty nice little, little cottage. I'm surprised you're tearing it down.
Well, it, it's, it's, it was built back in the thirties by, not by a carpenter.
Okay.
It's not insulated.
Okay.
Yeah. There's, there's a partial foundation under some of it. Some of it's on stone footings and, yeah, it's, it's, it's in pretty tough shape. It's kinda cute. They kept it up.
Yeah, nice, nice looking piece.
Yeah, but it's not usable for what, cause they wanna move in and move in full-time.
Got you.
So it needs to be insulated. We need to have a heating system.
Thank you.
Any other board members' questions?
Yeah, Bill Rosen, um, Succotash is a pretty busy road. But Mittendorf is, when I visited down there, it's, it's kinda partially dirt, partial asphalt. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I agree that it's a nice little cottage there. Be nice summer home, but, um, but you say it's not insulated?
No, um, we, at one point, we talked about rebuilding it, but it just, we couldn't do it. It was, it's not constructed well enough.
No, okay. What's the, uh, material that's going into the driveway?
It'll either be, uh, crushed stone or gravel.
Okay, so it kinda fits the character of the, of the land.
Yep.
And where is the septic system again?
It's, uh, see the big circle with the stockpile area?
Yeah.
It's between there and the shed.
Oh, it's between the shed. Okay.
Right, between, right where the twenty-six point four on the shed, directly between that little box there. It's right there.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other board members' questions? No? Okay, Mr. Ferland, you have anything else to add?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Other than this is weird.
Which part? The, the?
The Zoom meeting. Yeah, the Zoom, but I'm on my daughter's phone.
These, these meetings have always been weird for us anyway, so.
I'm too old.
You just haven't been to South Kingston for a while.
Oh, I have. I have a place over at, in Island View.
Okay.
Nice.
I've been doing work in South Kingston for thirty or forty years.
Well, I know.
We, we like to think, we like to think we're a little different. We're weird.
Yeah. I'm okay with that. I fit right in.
Excellent. Um, okay, uh, anyone in the, uh, audience have any, uh, objections or, or questions otherwise for this petition?
No one has raised their hand.
No one has raised their hand, okay. Board members, thoughts? Any other concerns? Motions?
I'll make a motion, Rick Jurzak.
Go for it.
Okay, please. Motion to approve the petition of Christine Cohane. Okay, this is in regards to, uh, the premises known as thirty-three two one Succotash Road, assessors map eighty-one dash three lot ninety-nine, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Okay. Edward Ferland, the contractor, came today and spoke, uh, representing, uh, Christine Cohane, the owner. Okay? He gave us, uh, much information with regard to the existing house that's on the site. And also gave us much information as to what the plan was to replace the house. All right. Uh, I wanna, before I forget, make part of this motion, the, uh, the plot plan, which is soil erosion control plan, three twenty-one Succotash Road. Okay, uh, by Dupree Engineering. Uh, I'm not sure I can see the date, the date. I, not, well, I don't see the date, but so be it. And also there are ten, ten pages of floor plans and, uh, by, uh, Jeffrey L. Lichten's architect. All right? All right, uh, what basically they would like to do here, or Ms., uh, Ms. Cohane would like to do is knock down the existing house. It's a summer house. It's uninsulated. And replace it with a similar house, similar size. The only real big difference is that the new house has a garage. Okay? Uh, it's pretty much in the same location as the old house. Okay? But due to the, uh, the configuration of this lot and the, and the current, uh, setback requirements, uh, this being a R eighty zone property, okay? They have to ask us, uh, for some relief, uh, with regard to the, uh, the front yard and the, uh, the corner side yard and the side yard, uh, setbacks. Okay? Having that in mind, okay, this, this motion would grant them, okay, the petition, and I'm just gonna get, go into this in, in some depth. Uh, the new loc- new dwelling will be located, uh, nineteen point one feet from the front property line and eight point three from the corner side uh, property line. Uh, in this particular case, the front property line is along Succotash Road. And the corner side line is along Mittendorf Road. Okay? The required front and corner side setback is forty feet. Okay? What they need is relief of twenty point nine feet and thirty-one point seven feet respectively with regard to the front and, uh, corner side setbacks. They also need relief, okay, with regard to the, uh, side yard setback, which is, if you look at the map, is, is the, what would look to be the rear, but it is the side yard because of this corner. And they need relief on that particular, uh, this, the required side yard is twelve feet and they would need relief of four point two feet. Okay, in order to put the premises back to, uh, similar to where it was before. They further need relief and they're asking for relief from the lot coverage requirement. Okay? Uh, the proposed lot coverage will be seventeen point six eight percent, uh, six eight feet. The maximum allowable lot coverage is the one thousand four hundred and ninety-four square feet, relief two hundred square feet, two hundred and seventy-four square feet is required. I believe that, that the, uh, the lot coverage is twenty percent with regard to R eighty and they are asking for point two threes or twenty-three point six seven percent lot coverage. Okay? All right, uh, with regard to, uh, them, uh, them, uh, giving us enough to, to, uh, give them a variance with regard to section nine oh seven. Uh, this motion, uh, asked the board to find that the hardship is due to the unique characteristic of this lot. It clearly is a very strangely configured lot. And due to the fact that it is such a small lot, only, uh, a little over seven thousand square feet, uh, seven thousand four hundred and seventy-one square feet in an R eighty zone. Okay? This, the setback requirements is such that in order to build a house here, they need relief. Okay? So it is due to the, the, uh, nature of this, uh, of, of the, the configuration of lot and also of the size of the lot. All right? All right, number two, uh, this is not the result of any prior action on the Cohanes part. As explained, this was an old summer cottage that they're knocking down. Okay? Uh, it clearly will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. The house that they're looking to put up, uh, seems to fit in well with the surrounding area pursuant to the plans that they've submitted. Okay, it is the least relief necessary. Okay, in order to, they're only building a house that's similar to the house that's on the site with a, with a garage, which in New England is something you almost have to have. Okay? So it pretty much is the least, least relief that they, they could get and still have an acceptable home. Okay? Uh, and if it were not granted, it would be more than a mirror inconvenience, but pretty much they would have to build a very strange-looking small house to, in the possible building envelope that it is allowed. Okay, pursuant to our ordinance. Okay? All right, all of that having said, been said, I would ask the board to grant this motion.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Jurzak. All right. Sorry, I'm slow to the press. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Charcawick. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Mr. Charcawick?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta? Aye. Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. We have the petition of Evan and Amanda Pop. One fifty Stony Fort Road, Saunders Town, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven four for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking rear yard setback relief to construct a sing- new single-family dwelling. The vacant lot is non-conforming by dimension and has reduced setbacks. The new dwelling will be located nineteen point four feet from the rear property line. The rear yard setback required is forty feet. Relief of twenty point six, uh, feet is requested. The lot size is one point seven seven acres. A dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance section two zero seven. Non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements and nine zero seven are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Amanda L. and Evan W. Pop. for premises located at Assessor's Map seventeen, Lot forty-four, and is zoned R-forty. Who is here for this?
Amanda Poppy and my husband Evan Poppy.
Evan Poppy.
Thank you for correcting my horrible, I said it both ways wrong, so.
Yeah.
And could both of you guys spell your names for me, please?
Amanda, A-M-A-N-D-A, Poppy, P-O-P-P-E.
And Evan?
P-V-A-N, Poppy, P-O-P-P-E.
Okay, and you both swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. So why don't you guys tell us what you'd like to do?
Sure.
Wait, before I go that far, let me just back up a little bit. Your, just to say what you guys have submitted with your application. Your, your application with the narrative signed and dated October twentieth, twenty-twenty. The owner authorization form signed and notarized October seventeenth, twenty-twenty. The two-hundred-foot radius map and a butters list. The proposed site development plan prepared by Atlas Land Surveying LLC. I'm sorry, Marcus Channel PLS dated October twenty-twenty. Preliminary construction plans, sheets one, two, three, four, and five, prepared by Habitat Post and Beam, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Your legal notice, certified proofs of mailing and affidavit of mailing, and correspondences, James Briggs, Briggs Jr. of one-fifty Stony Fort Road with notarized signature witnessing, dated October seventeenth, twenty-twenty, and Steve and Donna Briggs, eleven, oh, one-hundred-and one-twelve C Stony Fort Road with notarized signature witnessing dated October seventeenth, twenty-twenty. So, go ahead, I'm sorry. Tell us what you guys want to do.
So we have a hockey stick lot with a super-long driveway. It's over fourteen-hundred feet off of Stony Fort Road. We are surrounded by family, and we just kind of want to put a single-family house there. Three-bedroom, two-bath house with a walkout basement. And there's already an existing driveway there, so for us to use the slope of the land and also maintain that driveway and the buffer that's there between me and my uncle Steve and Donna Briggs, we kind of need to encroach a bit on that forty-foot buffer that's in place already on the rear of the property.
So you're surrounded by family on both sides?
Yes.
Okay. Not that that's relevant, but I'm just curious. So you have an existing driveway, and that driveway goes to a drive on the south as well as the west? It comes in from the north, and then it goes all the way through, and then it also elbows out to the west?
Yes.
And tell me a bit more about the sighting. I see something, you have a proposed stormwater management area. What's that going to be?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The, the, just in terms of understanding your, your placement of, of various things on the site?
Yeah.
Your, I see your house, obviously, you're, you're asking for your setback relief. So tell me, like, why, why, besides the driveway, you mentioned the topography. What else is sort of dictating that the house goes there? I see that there's a stormwater management and your septic. Are those two features significant when it comes to where the house goes?
They, they are. If we were to move the house lower, the septic would obviously have to be farther down. Again, encroaching on the existing driveway that's already in place.
We'd have to effectively cut off the, cut off the existing driveway and move it towards Lot nine, down towards Lot nine.
So basically, you're, you, you guys are at the highest, one of the higher points of the property?
Yes.
Right? So you want to take advantage of the natural topography in terms of the location of your septic system? So you wouldn't want to reverse it, like, put the house where the septic system is and vice versa?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
And your stormwater, why do you have the stormwater there? Do you know?
That's just where they suggested it would, should go.
And you need to have that?
Yeah.
You need to have that in order to build the house?
I mean, that's where they told, yes, I would say, yes.
That's what Atlas, that's what Atlas.
Is there someone here from, from any, anywhere else, or is it just you guys, just to make sure?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else about, about policemen or? You guys could think of, don't worry, we're going to ask you questions, but.
I'm sorry, not off the top of my head, no.
Mainly to, to basically hit the grade of the existing gravel driveway and just have it, have it, you know, proper pitch coming out from the walkout basement down through the proposed parking area. And this basically, because the existing driveway takes up a third, we just want to be in the upper, we don't.
You'd like to be up higher.
To be in the upper, other two-thirds, not, not effectively cut off the driveway going through to the south side and the west.
Especially if you like everyone to the western, to the south. You don't want to cut them off, right?
I do like my dad. I do like.
Okay, board members, you have questions for the applicants?
Yeah, I have a question. Bill Rosen here. Is that septic system already in?
No, it's proposed.
It hasn't been constructed.
No.
I'm not muted, so you're hearing me, right?
Yes, no, they.
No, it is not.
Okay.
It's all proposed site plan.
So this is an empty lot, but the driveway is there, correct? I mean, it's, the lot hasn't been built on except for the driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, and what's the material of the driveway?
We have existing test holes in place.
Uh huh, and the driveway is what, crushed stone or something like that?
It's, it's bank-run gravel and it's, it's very, it's very old. It was like one of the, one of the older features of the, of, of the area of the property.
There's something else there before that you know of? Besides the driveway?
No, not that I know of.
I'm just wondering why there's a driveway on an empty lot, essentially. Unless it was built by the Briggs.
Well, the, there's, there's two rights, right of ways on either side.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming my father, James Briggs, must have built it at some point, must have put it in at some point. Probably when he developed the lot and put the test holes in.
Here and bank-run gravel on the drive.
Look at the.
Basically, it's up, up to the proposed stormwater management area. And then it just turns to a natural, old, old road.
Okay.
Used for, I don't know what.
Do you have a contractor?
My, myself.
Oh, you're building it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members' questions? No? Okay. You guys have anything to add? Okay, if you don't. Okay, Jessica, can you, is there anyone out there, or do you want to remind them as to how they raise their hands, or?
Or, so star nine will raise your hand, star six will mute and unmute if you're calling in on phone. Excuse me, and then if you're on a computer, you just hit the raise hand function. But no one has raised hand, raised their hand.
Okay. Board members, any other questions, thoughts, motions, otherwise? I mean, I, it sounds to me that the, the, you've, you've gone through the best placement of, of the, the house relative to existing features on it in terms of the driveway. Makes sense that, that all of your stormwater and wastewater is running downhill. So I think you could sneak it a, probably a couple of feet here and there, but with no objections from your neighbors, then I don't really have a problem with it, so.
Great.
I don't know if anybody else wants to make some comments or just a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion. Seems like a simple one, and a, and a first one for me. I make a motion to approve the petition as read by the chairman earlier, including all the supporting information that he put forward. The individuals representing and speaking for the petitioners were the petitioners themselves, Amanda and Evan Poppy. There were several letters of support from their relatives, James Briggs and Anna and Donna Briggs, I guess it's Anna and Donna Briggs, who are the butters on either side of the undeveloped lot that they're building their, their house on, or propose to build their house on. The proposal is to place the house on the highest point of the, of the land. There is a, a pre, I want to say, or naturally-formed driveway that is presently there, but otherwise the land is empty of any structures at this particular time. They're looking for setback relief associated with the, what is it, the east side of the property? Let me get my map out.
West, I believe.
Is it the west side of the property?
Yeah. Rear.
Yeah, the west side. And they're asking for relief of twenty-point-six feet where the required rear yard setback is forty feet, so they're locating their closest point to the rear yard setback is nineteen-point-four feet from the property line. This is a dimensional variance as required by our zoning board. It seems like the only solution to the problem that they have, and it seems like the nicest one, and I'm looking forward to actually seeing this property developed. I know some people on Stony Fort, and it's a nice area to grow up in, raise kids in, et cetera. The board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is not due to the, is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and the structure, and not the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And is not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant, mainly because the property is undeveloped. There's already a driveway present, which makes it hard to place the, the proposed structure in any other point, and as a matter of fact, it is the nicest point of the, the property to place that structure. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. The applicant is mainly, just wants to have a house on this property. They want to be within shouting distance essentially of their, their relatives. And that type of, of, of arrangement, in my estimation, is one that's going to come back as a result of this pandemic we're in. That is, families are coming closer and closer together, even though they're separated presently, at the present time. But the future, it seems to me, is where we're going in that direction, and so I wish them well in that, in that regard. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. Mainly because this is a minor setback requirement. It's taking a piece of property, leaving it more or less natural in its state and actually producing a rather nice quality associated with this particular part of South Kingston. Stony Fort Road is just one of those unique areas in, in, in our little town that should remain with this type of development. And the, the board finds the relief to be granted is, is the least relief necessary. Mainly because of the stuff that's on this property, the driveway and the placement of the septic system needs to be where it is to take the natural flow of, of the fluid, the septic fluid downstream from the highest point of their house. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, would amount to more than a mere inconvenience, as stated previously. As a, as a consequence, I move that we approve this petition.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any more discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Charcawick? Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Enjoy the home. Okay. Next, we have the petition of James Howe, care of DeStefano Brothers of four-thirty-three Main Street in Wakefield, Rhode Island, zero-two-eight-seven-nine. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is proposing to construct a five-foot-by-nine-foot-three addition to the existing mudroom located on the rear of the dwelling. The proposed addition will be located twenty-two feet from the corner side property line. Required side setback is forty. Relief of eighteen feet is requested. The proposed lot coverage is eighteen thousand nineteen square feet. The maximum lot coverage allowed is fifteen-hundred-and-seventy-nine square feet. Relief of two-hundred-and-forty square feet is requested. Lot size is seventy-eight ninety-five square feet. Dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance section two-zero-seven, non-conforming lots of record building setback requirements and section four-zero-one Schedule of Dimensional Regulations and section nine oh seven Standards of Relief. Owner of the property is James F. Howe for premises located at seven Quagmire Drive, Assessor's Map sixty-four dash four, Lot one, and is zoned R-forty. With this application, we have, this is the Quagmire Drive. We have the application, signed and dated November twelfth, twenty-twenty. The owner agent authorization form signed and notarized November ninth, twenty-twenty. Twenty-foot radius map and a butters list. Plot plan prepared by Dowdell Engineering, Richard Couchen. PLS dated October seventh, twenty-nineteen. Construction plans, sheets thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, prepared by DeStefano Brothers Construction Incorporated. We also have the legal notice, certified proofs of mailing and affidavit of mailing. And who is here for this petition?
I am Peter DiStefano.
Peter DiStefano, could you spell your name, sir?
Yep, Peter, P-E-T-E-R, last name DiStefano, D-I-S-T-E-F-A-N-O.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, is there anything, anyone else speaking with you that you'd want to swear in?
I don't think we need anyone else at this time. Um, I don't think we need anyone else at this time. If I, we may, but I doubt it.
You can, you can call him in later. Okay, uh, so tell us what you want to do.
Yeah, so we have a really unique piece of property. Uh, the house is existing non-conforming, uh, they have an existing section of the house right now that is a three-season screened-in porch area that we would like to convert into regular part of the house. So mudroom extend the, expand the kitchen, and this is allowing us to do that. All the space already is existing, uh, pretty much. And because of the unique shape of the lot, um, it's already not, it's already outside of, uh, setbacks.
Okay, um, I'm just trying to open it up. Board members, any questions for Mr. DiStefano? None? Oh, Mr. Jurzak, uh, turn on your, uh, mic. Let it rip.
There you go. I did it now. I thought I did it, but I didn't do it. No, I didn't. All right, uh, Mr. DiStefano, I assume the only relief you need from us is for this, uh, five foot by nine foot three inch piece, right?
Yes, sir.
That's it. So you just need relief from this, from the side yard and you, you need relief for the lot coverage, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's, I just want to make that clear.
Excuse me.
I, I just have one question. Bill Rosen here.
Um, yes, sir.
Notice when I was there that the street was, there was a warning that there was flooding in the street, in that area. And there were signs at both end of the streets. Is this a flood zone?
I know it's a high elevation. I would have to look to see, um, I think, I know the area well. I've worked on other projects there. I know as you get down to the water, it's pretty low there, um, on that end, but I don't believe it is a flood zone, no.
And this property seems to be higher up than, uh,
Yeah.
Taken place.
Yeah, it's like on either, uh, either side of it, there's the low-lying areas.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members, questions for? No? Okay, uh, do you want to add anything, Mr. DiStefano?
Uh, no, it's time.
I'm just done, okay. Um, members of the, uh, audience, um, want to speak in behalf of, of this, uh, application? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. No one? Jessica?
No one.
Okay. So, uh, board members, um, anyone feeling anything, um, in particular about this? Yay, nay, yes? No? Okay.
Some motion to approve the petition of James Howe, care of the Stefano brothers for a property located at seven Quagmire Drive, Assessor's Map sixty-four dash four lot one. The request is for relief in two areas. First area of relief of eighteen feet is requested on the corner side setback. The second, uh, area of relief is in the, uh, maximum lot coverage. The applicant is seeking a relief of two hundred and forty square feet uh, in the construction of a five by nine foot three addition to an existing mudroom. This is required under section two oh seven, section four oh one and section nine oh seven of the, uh, of the ordinance. Uh, Mr. Peter DiStefano spoke, uh, as a representative of the applicant. He's the builder on this project. Uh, simple, straightforward request to build, uh, a small addition uh, to the, uh, looks like the eastern side of the existing structure. The existing structure is non-conforming, uh, and the relief is, uh, it, it, there's already, uh, uh, non-conforming setbacks, so this relief is, uh, uh, just an additional eight feet on, on that side. The information that was submitted with the application was read into the record by the chairman and the actual, uh, application and proposal with petition was read into the, uh, record by the chairman. Uh, the site plan, uh, is incorporated and, uh, clearly defines where the, uh, addition to this, uh, structure, uh, will be. There was no opposition to the request. The board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and structure because the land is non-conforming, uh, the lot is non-conforming and, uh, the existing structure, uh, is non-conforming by dimension. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. It's not primarily, uh, result from the desire to realize greater financial gain because the, uh, existing owners live in the premises and are simply looking to increase, uh, some, some kitchen area and some, uh, some mudroom area to the east. Uh, the, the, the requested variance will not alter the general characteristics of the area. There is a number of small lots in this area. Many are non-conforming and, uh, nothing that, uh, is planned for this addition will change the character of the neighborhood. This is the least relief necessary because there's no other, uh, uh, addition or no other side to the building where this addition would make sense. The hardship suffered by the owner, if this is not granted, would amount to more than a mean, uh, mere inconvenience once again because, uh, there is really no other, uh, area to expand the kitchen and nook area, as it's called, and mudroom area other than what's proposed. Uh, there are no conditions on this approval, and with that, I recommend, uh, that we approve the petition.
Hey, motion is made. Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Jurzak? Yeah. Okay, uh, and, uh, any other discussion? No? Uh, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Jurzak?
Hi.
Mr. Charcowick?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, I, motion passes. Good luck.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, um, I know it's close to ten o'clock, but hopefully these next two are, uh, fairly, uh, quick for us. Um, or straightforward, I should say, not quick. So we'll start with the petition of Stan Bailey of thirty-one Sandy Bottom Shores Drive of South Kingstown, Rhode Island, zero two eight seven nine for a dimensional variant under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story addition onto an existing single-family dwelling. The addition will include a garage on the first floor and a living space on the second floor. The proposed addition will be located seven feet from the side property line. The required setback is ten feet. Relief of three feet is requested. Lot size is ten thousand, uh, twenty-four square feet. Dimensional variance is required per zoning order, ordinance, section four zero one, schedule of dimensional regulations and section nine oh seven, standards of relief. The owner of the property is Tiffany and Stanley D. Bailey, Jr., for premises located at thirty-one Sandy Bottom Shores Drive, Assessor's Map forty-eight one, lot forty-five and is zoned R ten. And for the Sandy Bottom, uh, road, uh, Shores Drive, rather, uh, we have the application, the documents, rather, we have applications signed and dated November ninth, twenty twenty. The owner authorization form signed and notarized November ninth, twenty twenty. Two hundred-foot radius map and a butters list, construction plans of two pages stamped by Ernest George, uh, for the engineer, survey and plot plan prepared by Ms., uh, George B. DuPont. Um, PLS dated November sixth, twenty twenty. Legal notice, certified proofs of mailing and affidavit of, affidavit of mailing and correspondence. So who is here for, uh, this petition, the Bailey petition?
Uh, I am. I'm Stan Bailey.
Stan Bailey, okay. Stan, could you please spell your name for us?
S T A N B A I L E Y.
Okay, and you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And is anyone else here to speak on your behalf or with you? Application, okay.
Nope.
So, uh, Mr. Bailey, tell us what you'd like to do.
Um, we are proposing to build a twenty-two by thirty garage, as you already stated. Um, I guess the easiest way to, to explain it is there's no reasonable alternative for me to build a garage without this, uh, dimensional variance. The, um, the garage, it, it's going to go with what's going on with the, the rest of the neighborhood now. Everything here is residential. Um, it's nothing over the top. It, it kind of fits in with everything that's going here. Um, I actually designed the smallest possible two-car garage that I could, it being twenty-two feet. Whereas the architect was kind of pushing me to go for twenty-four or twenty-six feet to kind of have a better aesthetic on the front of the house. Um, I kind of wanted to, to go smaller, so I wasn't encroaching on my, my neighbor's yard over there. Um, I guess, yeah, that's really what my hardship is. If, if I go any smaller, I won't be able to, to fit two cars. Uh, we'll lose the laundry room upstairs and, I mean, my wife was with all our kids. It's, she's, to be doing laundry, going all the way down to the basement from the second floor isn't, uh, it isn't fun, so I guess that's basically it. Oh, we're not, sorry, I don't mean to, uh, butt back in, but, um, also our, uh, youngest child right now is, uh, actually sleeps in our bedroom, so another big part of this garage is, is, uh, putting his bedroom in the addition as well.
Sanity is a good reason. Um, so, uh, so, okay, uh, board members, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Bailey, yeah. Mr. Bailey is Tom Daniels. Um, I, I looked at your property and, and, and I'm looking at the site plan. It looks like part of that fence is on the other you, on the, uh, butters property?
Uh, the fence, my backyard that separates me and my neighbor's backyard.
Yeah, you've got a fence back there and then along the side yard, it looks like it's, uh, it looks like it's over the line on his side or?
Absolutely, yeah. It's, uh, I think it's, it's at, at, uh, where the garage is going, it's about three feet over the line. And as it gets further back towards the back of our property, it's actually four feet.
So you share the fence, in other words?
Yeah, that, yeah, it's my neighbor's fence. That's, we bought the house and that's always how the backyards were, were, uh, set up, so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Nothing that we put in or anything like that, no.
Just want to make sure that dimension on the site plan was, was accurate.
Absolutely, and actually, when, when I first started designing everything, that fence was kind of what I based everything off of, and then once we had the, the surveyor come out, I was actually surprised to find as well that, that it was, you know, three or four feet off, so.
Okay.
That's kind of why we're here in the first place.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other board members, questions?
Mr. Chairman, um,
Yes, Mr. Rosen.
I don't know if anybody else received this, but I received, uh, from the law offices of Sean C. Donahue.
Yes, and I'm going to get to that right.
Okay.
We're going to get, I mean, if, if you want, we can jump right into that. If there's no other questions, pipe board members?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Cagnetta, it should be noted that attorney Serta, I'm sorry, is here and he does have his hand raised, so.
Okay, excellent. So, uh, but, okay, so there are no other questions? So, uh, well, since this is a lengthy letter, why don't we have Mr. Serta, uh, present sort of his, uh, objections to the petition?
He just needs to unmute and he's I think he should be good.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I will try to be brief considering the late hour. Um, and I know my client would like to speak and I believe there are maybe some other property owners as well. Respectfully to the, uh, applicant, this isn't the smallest, this isn't the smallest amount of relief or the least amount of relief necessary. Um, and it just quite plainly doesn't meet the statutory criteria. Um, I, I'm gonna, I will spare you the pain of me reading my letter, but summarizing it, um, the application on its face states that the hardship here seems to be that, um, Mr. Bailey has additional children and that he is a local contractor and that his commercial business is spilling out into his property. Respectfully, the commercial stuff shouldn't be there to begin with. And he, there are more than adequate relief for him within the building code setback, within the building envelope. Um, he could build a nineteen-foot long structure on his, on his building, on his existing residence without any relief from this board. Uh, the, these are, this is a, um, a built-out development that was designed, uh, all at one time, and I believe the early nineties. It, it, there are only two other garages in the general vicinity of Sandy Bottom, uh, Shores Road. And those are single garages and both of them are, uh, in the back of the primary structure, either detached or attached. Uh, there are no, from what I can see from an over, from overlay, uh, the aerials or the overlays, no other two car garages in the general area. Um, this is a minimum-sized lot for this zoning area. It is twenty-four square feet above the general lot. Uh, so there is a lot going on on these lots already. Um, Mr. Bailey already has a large accessory structure in the back of his property. But even keeping that in mind, in my rough estimation, and I'm not an engineer, and these plans, um, the architecturals don't have a scale on them from what I could tell. There's more than adequate space within the building envelope for this structure, should it want to, Mr. Bailey wanted to be the same size to be built in the rear of this, of the structure and accessed via his driveway, which already extends past his house. Uh, so I respectfully just would suggest that it doesn't meet the statutory criteria for, uh, for your, uh, for your zoning ordinance. It's just not the least amount of relief necessary. And the hardship here, uh, is seemingly self-created. And Mr. Bailey purchased this house in two thousand seventeen, so the conditions that are existing are quite clear. And then I think further, his plans, if you look at, uh, the architecturals that were submitted, the page with Mr. DuPont stamp on it, there's a dashed line, and again, there's no scale, but it appears that that would be the line that the bill, if the structure were to conform with the building, uh, setbacks, that that's where the building would end. So there's still a significant amount of space up there. There's more than enough room for a master bath as it's labeled, and I would assume a master bedroom as well as a second bedroom up there. Even with staying inside of the nineteen feet, the building code, uh, or the building envelope. Uh, so I would be happy to answer any other questions, and I, I know, uh, my client would like to add a few things.
Okay, uh, well, why don't you, um, why don't you, uh, client add, add a few things and then we'll go back and we'll ask Mr. Bailey a few questions?
All right, so, okay, you're, you're good to go.
Am I good to go? Okay, great. Uh, my name's Robert Arnon, uh, R O B.
Spell your name, please. Yep.
R O B E R T A R N O N E.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, go ahead.
Uh, well, to start with, um, the lots in our neighborhood is, as Stan said, the things are going in that direction. That is not a, that's, that's not a truth. Um, there's no only one garage that's been built on this neighborhood that, uh, wasn't here from the beginning, and that was up, up the hill off of George Schaefer, and it wasn't, uh, on our neighborhood. The existing garages were built, uh, on the homes when the homes were built. They're not large lots. Uh, roughly between ten thousand and eleven thousand square feet. Um, I know that right now his proposed garage and/or footprint of this whole, uh, new structure um, is only three hundred square feet smaller than the footprint of his house. So it's, uh, for, it's quite a large structure trying to be built on these small lots. Um, again, I am not trying to stop him from building a garage, uh, you know, more power to him, uh, but I think that he needs to stay.
I think that he needs to stay within his ten-foot minimum. Um, it it, to me, when I'm driving home and I'm and I pull into my driveway and I see this monolith built neck right next to my property line, it makes me feel like, one, my value of my house is gonna go down, because it 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 seems like it encroaches so close to my home. Um, there is not a lot of space on my right side of my house next to uh my neighbor to my right, and and just so you know, I am, uh, if if you're looking at Stan's house from the front, I am the neighbor to the right. Um, that fence, yeah, is mine, and that my property, so I found out, goes at its farthest, four feet in the direction of his home. Uh, the fence was there when I bought the house, so um, I did not move it, oh, you know, or or uh I have no intentions of moving it or anything like that at the moment. Um, but I do know that he does have a construction business. I do know that he has a lot of tools, but he leaves them outside all around the, all around the house. So it would be nice if he had a garage to put them in. Does it have to be a two-car? No, it could be a garage and a half, and it would still be able to serve his purpose. Uh, it would, he's looking to get another bedroom. Right now, when he moved into the house, it was a theoretically, five-bedroom house, two bedrooms downstairs, three upstairs. They, the original two bedrooms downstairs were uh from when the house was fir-first built. The upstairs was never finished. Uh, the owner prior to, or prior to him, built three bedrooms upstairs and a bath. So it was five bedrooms. Uh, the Baileys opted to open up the whole downstairs of their house and eliminate two bedrooms downstairs to make it a three-bedroom house. Um, in looking at his petition, he's requested uh that he gets a garage to store his his um tools and or to stage things, which, again, it's not a commercial-zoned area, but, you know, I I'm not gonna stop him from doing what he has to do to make a living. Um, but uh, he also states that it's important that he gets another bedroom for his uh newborn son, or not newborn, but I think like two years old. Um, which I can understand as well, but he's adding a, you know, he's not looking to just do that, though. He's looking to add a master suite, another bedroom, a washer and dryer, or wet closet, a walk-in closet, and he's extended the size of this house again to just short of the size or the garage, just to just short of the size of the home. So it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood, and it being so close and elevated so high, he's gonna be looking right down into my backyard. Uh, I'll feel like I have no privacy. Um, and I guess that's the majority of what I do have to say. I'm sure I had a whole bunch of things, but I might have forgotten something at the moment. I'll raise my hand again if needed.
No, that's fine. Okay, um, so we got a couple of things here. Um, so, uh, Mr. Bailey, um, first is, um, why can't the garage be in conformance within that three feet, um, either going backwards or just being skinnier?
Well, if I went backwards, I would have to, I I don't know, I have a deck on the back of my house that would have to be removed and somehow just lose my whole backyard by putting, you don't really see too many garages in the the back of a house. I mean, if you look at like a typical Cape Cod, the garage will be on the right-hand side. You drive up the driveway right into the into the garage. Um, and then the main thing, like I said, I mean, it's designed at twenty-two feet, because that's that's the smallest I can go and still step in. My kitchen is on that side of the house there. So to be able to get the steps into my kitchen and actually still be able to pull the vehicles into the garage, that's the smallest footprint that that I can possibly do. And again.
How many wood height difference between your garage and the kitchen?
Um, I don't have the eleva, it's a, it's a two-step. I don't have the actual exact elevation, but it's two steps up into the kitchen. Like, I don't even actually have enough room to do it with a landing, and then the steps, I actually have to do steps up into the the kitchen itself, so.
To get two cars side by side?
Exactly. In a typical garage would be minimum twenty-four feet, so you can get that three-foot landing, step up and go that way. Whereas I opted to not even, you know, go for that. And um, I mean, just to kind of hit on another couple of points, um, as far as the the privacy thing, and it's the, I mean, this this meeting isn't, we're not here to throw stones. I've always, you know, me and Rob are friendly. We've always, you know, been fine. But um, there, on that side of the house, there's only one window, and that's in my bathroom, and that's just so you can have ventilation in the bathroom. There are no other windows on that side of the project, so it won't won't be anything that invades on his privacy. If anything, it gives us more privacy, because he has a raised ranch where his um, his deck is up on the second floor. So when we're, you know, when our backyard's sitting on a thing, their deck looks straight down over the fence into our back deck area, which I mean, whatever, I don't care. Like I said, we're friendly. But this will actually, because the the garage goes past the back of the house, this will actually give us uh more privacy.
Right.
Um, and I mean, it's, it's a, you know, if you did shrink it, there's, I can't fit two cars for one, so we'll always have vehicles constantly on the street like we do now. And uh, like I said, the main thing is there's no physical way to fit the laundry room up there with uh with with doing that, so. I guess that's kind of where we are with everything.
Um, oh, and the the one thing I wanted to ask, um, uh, the neighbor, um, how about lot coverage? Because that's the other thing he's asking for. Do you, do you have an issue with um the fact that he's asking for uh additional?
Are you asking, you're asking Rob that?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, okay, uh, I don't understand your question about lot coverage. What do you mean? In terms of the four feet, the the in terms of the 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 property that goes past my fence that's mine?
No, Mr. Chairman, can I weigh in on that?
Yeah, please, am I?
My, from what I've spoke, from what I've spoken with my client, and I'm happy to have him follow up, his issue really is with regard to the setback and not with regard to the overall uh, the concept of him building a garage. Were he to place this garage in the same si- same size inside of the building envelope? I don't think my client would have a lot of pro- concerns, but I don't, uh, I want him to be able to weigh in on that. His biggest concern, also, we start to get into things like uh, the ability, there there appear to be, each of these parties appear to have pools in their backyard. So when you start cutting into that ten-foot setback, then you have cars parked, and you start to worry about the ability of rescue vehicles to get into the back. There's no access from the backyard. It opens up into conservation space owned by the town. Uh, so, and as you look throughout the neighborhood, one of the key components of this statute is that it has to be in conformance of the neighborhood. There are no other, there are no other garo- two-car garages, and there are no other garages attached directly to the side of a house. And from what I can tell in searching through your records, certainly on Sandy Bottom Shores Lane, there are no other variances, dimensional variances that have been granted, because this was a lot, a development that was laid out. I I think you mentioned it earlier in uh the meeting, Mr. Chairman, that some of these neighborhoods are in South Kingston have been built out over time, over the three hundred years of history in town. This neighborhood is not like that. It was all planned out with square, with uh regular-shaped lots, with structures that were centered in all of those lots that are almost all exactly twenty-five feet from the uh roadway, which is the minimum setback, and it and it is a cohesive neighborhood that terminates into a very nice pond. Uh, and in fact, this thirty-one is right at the bottom of the accessway, or the main, the only way in and out of the neigh- this this road, which is its own little neighborhood. And this would take up the entire lot, in essence, and it would create a wall of building and separate the roadway from the scenic conservation area in the back as you enter it. Uh, it 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 just should be kept at at the building envelope, at the nineteen feet. It there's, he missed, uh, Mr. Bailey can put a car in there. He can build his landing, and he can store his tools. Um, he, in in the hardship, he he hasn't established a hardship respectfully. Uh, certainly one that's not self-created. It's not an undersized lot of record. Um, there is no compelling hardship here that would prevent him from having any ba- a a reasonable beneficial use of his property.
Okay, um, and I apologize. I I I was wrong. This is not a a uh coverage issue. Um, so, um, but, okay, thank you. Uh, board members, any questions for, um, the the neighbor or for the applicant?
I have a question for Stephen.
Hmm?
Um, the, uh, well, Mr. Arnon or Stephen, um, is your address twenty-nine Sandy Bottom Shores Road? Because I I can't seem to find that.
Twenty, twenty-one.
Okay.
That was a, that was an incorrect typo on my part. I apologize.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So this is the house directly to the right.
Yes.
Of the Baileys, okay. Just want to clear that up.
Okay. And I I uh I I raised my hand. I don't know if I'm allowed to speak at the moment.
Of course, go ahead.
But in terms of when Stan said that his deck would be in the way if he moved it back, that's not true. The deck does not extend past the side of the house. So if this was getting built directly on the side of the house, this could extend farther back. I am worried about access as well, if there was ever an emergency vehicle or anything like that, only having seven feet um of space uh to get access to the back of his property, because on the opposite side of his house is an in-ground pool. You can't do it there. And on the right side, it's gonna make it difficult.
Okay.
Uh, I do think, and I'm sure with a creative uh architect, that if it was squeezed down to nineteen feet, that all this could be placed back into that, or everything that he's looking, well, more than what he's looking originally to or asking for um can be placed into that upstairs. He's just not gonna have a two-car garage. Again, you can get a garage and a half, bigger than nineteen feet, enough to store his tools. Everybody in this neighborhood, when they, when you moved into this neighborhood, or whenever, anybody moved into this neighborhood, they all knew that they had to park in their driveways if they have multiple cars, or that they're gonna park um on the street. It's just, it was inevitable. There was no two-car garo- uh two-car driveways anywhere. Um, so, again, a a driveway, could it be extended to the end of this, where a car can be parked to the right, so cars can get in and out of that garage? Without being blocked uh and still be within the code of ten feet? Again, I'm not trying to stop him from building a garage. Um, you know, if he needs it, uh, I think he should have it. I just don't think that he meets any criteria of having um the hard to make it twenty-two feet wide, seven foot of variance, and just because he needs a washer and dryer upstairs or something like that. You know, I've lived in my house for uh uh just short of twenty years now, and I walk that same set of steps, going to my washer and dryer every day, so.
Right.
It's not a necessity. It's just a convenience.
Okay.
Question for.
Members, you have any other questions?
Um, question for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Very simple. Can you reduce the footprint by two and a half feet?
I cannot, no.
Why?
Um, I've already stated that I would lose the, we would lose our ability for a two-two-car garage, and we would lose the laundry room upstairs. And right now, the second bedroom up there is a twelve-by-twelve bedroom. If we shrink that down to a nine-by-twelve, it just wasn't, it just doesn't work the way, the way that we have everything designed. We already have.
So you, how many, uh, you, so you uh intend to park two vehicles in the gar- in this garage, or one vehicle and tools? What, which way?
I have enough room in the back of the garage for my storage for tools and such like that. And the main, the main reason is for, we can have my wife's car on the left-hand side, and then I have a boat that goes on the right-hand side that we can park in the garage to keep in for the winter, so it's not just hanging out in the the middle of the yard as, if you drove by the property, you see my boat just sitting in the yard, and that's definitely a good thing for anyone involved. And uh, if I could just add real quick, um, I just had two more points on theirs, and then I'll just, um, I think that's all I have. Um, I know the lawyer and Rob were concerned about um emergencies and people being able to get back, and I know that was a big thing. Well, there's actually on the plan, there's a uh eight-foot drop for a eight-foot garage door actually going on the back of the property as well. So there will be no problem for for a vehicle to be able to pass through to the back if they they.
So in other words, it, they would be able to pass from the front through through the back?
All the way through, yeah. So it's a sixty-foot garage door in the front, and there would be an eight-foot um garage door in the back as well, so it'd create one, one straight pass-through. Um, and then, uh, finally, I just, it almost seems uh between uh Stephen's points that they're kind of making two separate points, which to me doesn't make uh very much sense. In in one uh form, they're saying, oh, there are no garages in the entire neighborhood, which isn't true. So that seems like they don't want a garage at all, but then in the next next sentence, they're saying, oh, no, it's fine to have a garage, but we just want a nineteen-foot garage instead of a three uh uh twenty-two-foot garage. And to me, if you're driving down the hill and you look at my property, if you see a twenty-two-foot-wide garage that's two stories high, or you see a nineteen-foot-wide garage that's two stories high, aesthetically, it's gonna look exactly the same. The only difference is one's gonna be three feet wider. It's not like we shrink it down to to nineteen feet, and all of a sudden, the top comes down, and it, you know what I mean? It, the house is gonna have the same exact look either way. This is, uh, I guess, bit my my biggest point, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So Chairman, can I ask some question? Rick Churcher?
Yes, Mr.
Yeah, Mr. Bailey, uh, if you're gonna park a boat in there, why can't you extend the garage, make it nineteen feet by five feet, thirty-five feet, and have the boat in back of your car? You're not gonna be bringing the boat in and out all the time. Wouldn't that fit?
Uh, no, it wouldn't. There's only, it's only thirty feet deep.
How about thirty-five feet?
That's not.
You have, you'd have the same square footage.
Yeah, but I'd lose my, that just eats into my backyard. I ju- it wouldn't.
Well.
I'm already.
You can't have every.
It just doesn't flow with the um, with my property, that it just wouldn't flow with my yard. It's just not a it's not, it's just, that would be, to me, that would seem more out of place in the neighborhood to to create a long, skinny structure, you know, I to me, it just aesthetically wouldn't, it wouldn't look right.
I mean, you're you're allowed to do it, though, without without a dimensional variance, is the point.
Yes, that's true.
Right. And and there's an objection to to so it makes it.
But, but so, a two-car garage is still a two-car garage with the option to put a boat. I still wouldn't be able to fit two cars in there.
Right.
Um, right. Mr. Chairman, um, just a couple of points. There is also a shed in the back. Mr. Bailey has an existing structure in the back of his property that's of significant size that um certainly could store uh uh some of these things in it. Um, I'm not sure what it's currently used for, but and and I just have to keep going back to the points. Miss, the the points Mr. Bailey keeps making are about his personal needs. They're not a, and there's nothing here that's unique about the property um that had, that creates this situation. They're about Mr. Bailey's personal needs, which is really not what this statute is about, and not what the the criteria for this type of relief is. So I I just would respectfully suggest that there are no two-car garages in the neighborhood, and that is the 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 key, and I I would, um, Mr. Chairman, you said it very succinctly just recently. He can do whatever he wants inside of the nineteen feet, and uh as long as he meets building code and all the other regulations, we can't do anything about it, nor do we believe we should be able to. Uh, that's his property, and he pays for it. So we would just uh request that he uh with absent providing some stat, some of the statutorily required evidence and criteria that he be required to stay inside of that building envelope.
And um, this is Robert Arnon again. May I? This is Rob Arnon again. May I?
Yes. Yeah, please.
You know, again, Stan had said that, you know, there are garages on the neighborhood, like we said, again. As as my attorney said, he, you know, I'm not trying to stop him from being able to do what he's allowed to do on his property, you know, again, that more power to him that way. Make it fit into that into those dimensions. I do not want it to encroach any farther than that towards my property. Because again, the neighborhood is, you know, in itself, the houses aren't that far apart. It'll make my house look like it has a smaller property, whether it be a seven-foot space or a ten-foot, it would still make my house looks, my property look smaller, you know. Again, it's going to be, it is what it is, but it's going to look smaller. What I'm trying to state is that I can't stop him from building a garage at the ten-foot mark. And I'm not trying to. But I I seven, that three feet is important to me. It definitely is. You know, I keep my boat on, and I don't know if anybody's driven by our properties from the board. But if they have, or if they're looking on a Google map, they'll see that I also have a larger boat than Stan. And I do what I have to do with it in terms of I keep it on my yard. I put the driveway in the summer, and it's to the to the side of the driveway. I could bring it to the other side of the tree and put it right next to his property. But I opt not to do that because I don't want to encroach on, you know, on being so close to him. And and I just think that as a neighborly thing, that's, you know, there there should be give and take in that sort of situation. You know, my objections are aren't anything new to Stan. I had talked to him about it when I got the original paperwork. I'm friendly with Stan. I like him. I like him as a neighbor. Got nothing to do with the a personal thing. It's just about a, my property and 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 how I feel enclosed in.
Okay, well, we certainly respect that. Mr. Bailey, do you want to follow up with anything, or or do you want to make sure?
I don't want to, I don't want to, yeah, there's just one more thing that I missed, and I don't even know if this matters. If you guys just look at it like, oh, it's three feet at its worst point, so that's three feet everywhere. But my property line is actually somewhat unique where it angles in from the street going back. And in the front of my my front corner, which is really the the spot and and question where he doesn't, you know, want me close to his driveway, is I'm actually eight-point-eight feet off the property line on my front corner. I'm I'm the, I'm seven feet on the very back corner. And that's where we're already separated by our fences as it is. So, yeah, I mean, I guess that would be my only, and and this is my my side and Rob's side is my garage butting up against his driveway side of his house. It's not actually against his house. So I just think that that's probably important for you guys to know as well that we're not, because they've they've said that there are no, you know, no two-car garages on Sandy Bottom. Well, if literally, if you go count four houses up the the hill from my house, there was a very variance-approved just this spring for Lance Whaley that needed five feet of relief. It's a twenty-eight-foot garage, and that actually is close to his neighbor's house, not his driveway. So I could see Rob and Wendy's concern, you know, not wanting that look. But this is, to me, this is kind of, you're not really comparing apples to apples.
Okay. Board members, any other questions for the applicant or the butter?
I have a question for Mr. Arnon. The the concern about emergency vehicles, is there access to your backyard from your garage or from the other side of your house?
I don't have a garage. I.
I mean, I'm sorry, from your driveway?
Yeah, there's a, so my whole backyard is enclosed in a fence, except for what alongside the woods that's back there. But the whole fence opens up to over eight feet wide at my driveway, so I can get my own personal utility trailer and anything ever that I need to get in and out of my backyard. So it all opens up.
So so there would be access for emergency vehicles?
My house. My house, yes. His house, no. Unless he comes on my property. Or if he puts an eight-foot garage door in it.
Okay, so the concern about the emergency vehicles is relative to to Mr. Bailey's property, not to your own?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, Jessica, do you want to see if there's anyone out there that wishes to speak in behalf? Either for or against?
No one else has raised their hand.
I do know that I had other neighbors that were interested in being on this, but I think they didn't realize how long the session was going to be.
Yeah, unfortunately. Yeah. Okay. So if there isn't anything else, is everyone else okay? Okay, why don't we close the public comment and kind of go around? Mr. Jurzak, how are you feeling about this?
I hate to say this, but from a standpoint of 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 a a strict interpretation of the ordinance.
Okay.
I have to agree with Attorney Sirnut. Okay. As much as I would, I would like to give this this gentleman what he asks, okay? I think that the neighbors have a right in this, in this situation, okay, to insist or ask that we we toe the line on the ordinance. I I think there are, frankly, I think that that he could do what he would like to do within the constraints of the ordinance by building a nineteen-by-thirty-five-foot garage, okay? So I don't intend to vote for this.
Mr. Daniels?
The main point of the argument, I think, I think if I understand the testimony and the argument by the attorney correctly is related to property values. Certainly, that was indicated by the butter, the property owner and several parts of his testimony. And the argument made by the attorney that the garage would be out of character with the neighborhood. Neither is expert testimony, in my opinion. It's opinion. We have testimony that this board granted a garage in the spring, I believe, for Mr. Bailey up the street. Records could could reflect that, I'm sure. So I'm hesitant to for the sake of three feet. I'm hesitant to vote against this petition, but I'm open to, I'm open to what the others have to say.
Mr. Rosen, how are you feeling?
Seems to me that I don't want to call it a dispute, but seems to me that neighbors are talking about something that doesn't look very neighborly in my estimation. I just got the lawyer's report today, three minutes before this meeting, and I haven't had a chance to look it over, but from what the lawyer has said, and the fact that there doesn't seem to be a real hardship here, I would tend to vote against this petition.
Okay. At this. Mr. Okay. Mr. Charcowick, how are you feeling?
So I I don't really understand the the basis for the objections, to be honest. I mean, it looks like there's an attached two-car garage about two-hundred-and-sixty feet from the petitioner's property on the corner of Social Heights and Sandy Bottom Shores. The fact that the board has already approved variance for another garage in the neighborhood, I think, undercuts the argument about the lack of garages and the character of the neighborhood. Also think the Mr. Arnon has lived with a fence that's encroaching on his property by four feet. Sounds like since he bought the property and has managed to to live with that. You know, I think.
That's that's a mistake. I'm sorry, but.
Hang on, hang on. We've closed the public, but go ahead.
I'm sorry, but just I need to correct.
Miss, yeah, no, but I'm sorry, we can't. We can't. We've closed the public comment.
Well.
I I've driven past this property numerous times. I've seen the petitioner's tools out and then out and, you know, in the driveway, and I've seen the book he's talking about. You know, I I don't see much difference in it. You know, the three-foot, if that was reduced to make it nineteen, it would just make it a less usable space and make it awkward, even be able to get two cars in there or a boat in a car. So I don't really see a reason to to vote against this one.
Okay. Well, I I have to agree with Mr. Jurzak, Jurzak and Mr. Rosen about the petitioner meeting his burden in terms of the the property having unique characteristics in which prevent them from enjoying their the property. So you know, I I feel that that I I couldn't, I couldn't pass it as well. So does someone want to make a motion? Either for or against?
Three against.
Yes, I mean, someone's got to make the motion in order to.
Where are we at now? We have.
Three against, two for.
So someone's got to make a motion to deny.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Okay. Make a motion denied a petition, okay, of Stan Bailey, okay? This is with regard to thirty-one Sandy Bottom Shores Drive, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, okay? Mr. Bailey testified, okay, told us exactly what he wanted to do, all right? Told us explained the garage in general. Explained what he wanted to do on the second floor and the reason for it, okay? We then had testimony and opposition, okay, by Robert Arnon, next-door neighbor, as well as his attorney, Stephen Sirnut, okay? Again, in opposition, pointing out that Mr. Bailey had not shown an adequate hardship, okay? And that, secondly, that this was not the least relief necessary. And therefore, under our ordinance, nine oh seven A one, that Mr. Bailey has not sufficiently satisfied his burden of of showing that he falls within the statute and has a right to a variance, okay? For that reason, I ask that the petition be denied.
Okay. Motion is made. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen and discussion. This is for denying it, not approval. So any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Jurzak?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Charcowick?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Nay.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye. The motion is passed to deny the petition. Sorry. Okay. Last thing we have to.
Can we put the?
Edition of. What's that?
Mr. Chairman, in that it's ten forty-five. Can we put the next one off? It's up to you, I mean, but.
This is, I mean, this is, it seems pretty straightforward. I'm not aware of anyone that's that's opposed to it. They're just looking to to put a front porch on, and they've been waiting all night. So I hate to, I hate to cut them off, but I have a feeling that it, well, let me just check. Jess, is there anyone else here? Besides the Pinos?
No, at this point, the people who are in attendance have been here all night. One is the Poppies, and then there's the nine-eight-eight number that's been here all night.
Okay, so unless they're going to oppose the Rome, let's see how this goes. So this is.
Received no objection from anyone about this.
Excellent. So this is the petition of Joseph Joseph Pena of one sixty-five North Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, zero-two-eight-seven-nine. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking to construct an eight-foot-by-twenty-one-foot covered deck closer to the front property line than allowed. The covered deck will be located on the first story and will be nine foot two inches from the front property line. The required front yard setback is thirty-five feet, or relief of twenty-five-point-eight feet is requested. Lot size is eleven thousand two hundred and forty square feet. Dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section two zero seven, non-conforming lot of record, building setback requirements, and section nine oh seven standards of relief. Owner of the property is Joseph Pena for premises located at one sixty-five North Road, assessor's map forty-nine dash one, lot ninety-five, and is zoned R twenty. In this matter, we have documents of the application signed November thirteenth, twenty twenty. Owner agent authorization form signed and notarized November thirteenth. Two-hundred-foot radius map and a butter's list location plan prepared by Stephen Pinch PLS dated July two thousand and four. Proposed site plan, legal notice, certified proofs of mailing, and affidavit mailing and correspondence of James Pena dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty. And who's here? For this one?
Um. Lila Fortenpena.
Penna, and I said it wrong every time again. See?
Sorry.
Something I do. So.
Um, Joe's here, but he's in the attendees now for some reason. I'll move him over. Thanks.
Okay.
He's currently at work.
So, so please state your name and spell it.
Lila, L-I-L-A, Fortenpena, F-O-R-T-I-N-P-E-N-A.
And is Joseph Joe going to speak as well?
Joe, you're on.
Yep.
I can.
So Joe, spell your name for us, please.
J O S E P H P E N A.
P N A. And do both of you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay. It's a little hard to hear you, Joe, but so I don't know if Lila, you want to, you want to talk and or who wants to talk? Whoever's more comfortable.
Lila can.
Basically, we're just applying to put a front porch on. We think it would look more aesthetic to the house, and almost all of our neighbors have a front porch. I don't know. Everything gets dropped off in our front porch, and we have no access to it, really. I mean, we have the front door, but everything sits out there on that little tiny slab. Yeah, it's like a little piece of I don't know. Cobblestone. Sorry.
And you mentioned that you're not alone, like neighbors have porches as well? It's not just you?
Yeah, I'm across the street, Pierces, they have a very nice porch. It looks almost like what we would attend and intend on doing. A farmer's porch.
And the houses, the house to, if you're looking at your house, the house to your right, where the one with the shingles?
Yes.
Okay, is that porch sticking out farther than yours?
That one. She is past. She's actually, I think, will probably be in line with what pretty close to what she's in line with currently.
Okay. And the porch, you're asking to go all the way across the front?
Yes. So it'll be from the each corner of the front of the house.
Okay. And what else? Okay, that's all I have for now. You have anything to add? At this point? Don't have to?
Nope.
Okay. Board members, any questions for the applicant?
Question for the applicant, Tom.
Question for the applicant, Tom Daniels, um, retaining wall in the front. Do you anticipate any problem with that?
No, the retaining, retaining wall in the, in the very front, on the, with the very front of the property.
Right. You anticipate any, uh, problem with, uh, constructing the deck here? The porch?
Okay. So it's not going to be even close? Not, it'll be pretty far away from it?
Yeah. And then the
Second question. Okay. Second question is, uh, that's a busy street. It's narrow, a lot of traffic. Do you anticipate any issue with the construction vehicles building the deck?
No, not at all.
Or how it's going to be done, but
No, not at all. We, we as the homeowners and, um, my faithful friend here is going to help construct the porch and to the front of our house for materials and off the side.
Okay. All right. Good. Thanks.
Quick question, uh, Rick Jurzak, of the follow up on Mr. Daniels' question. Do you anticipate, or have you thought, is there any issue with sightlines coming out of there when you're coming out of your driveway? Is it going to block anything from your seeing? That's a, that's a busy road. I went in there the other day and tried to back out and I almost got killed. The college kids, the college kids are maniacs.
They are. It's a rough road. We actually have We have
The point is, what I'm asking you is, uh, I, I just want to make sure you've thought about this. Before you build a porch, is that going to block your sightline anymore? Okay. The more, make it more dangerous for you.
No, cause
And minimal railing, so there won't be really an obstruction that way. And it's far enough setback from the road where even if you're backing out with a vehicle, you can still see the road.
Okay. I just wanted you to think about it. Okay.
And if you guys go in your driveways, there, is there a way for you to turn around in your driveway, like behind your house?
You have to pull all the way into our driveway and then turn around. Yes, you can pull out forward. You don't have to back out into the road.
Perfect. Okay.
I actually usually just pull straight out because I cannot back out into the road. I'm too scared.
Okay. Board members, any other questions?
Just one. Uh, how, how wide is the porch going to be?
Uh, the width of the house is 21 eight, I think. And it'll be just a little bit less than that to allow for, um, the roof and aesthetic setbacks on the corners.
And from the house to the edge of the, uh, the porch off the front side, what's that eight, 10 feet?
Yeah, about that. I'm not exactly positive, but it's around there.
Okay.
And, um, you do need, uh, stairs, uh, just to check with Jamie, uh, our, our, our building official, uh, stairs are included or not included in this?
Yeah, it requires two steps. Um, there hasn't been a, a solid, uh, location um, signed upon yet. But either way, it's not going to exceed that eight feet that, you know, they're looking for.
Okay. Are they included though, Jamie?
Um, they, they would have to be advertised for, unless if it was made out of stone or concrete. Then that wouldn't be part of the deck or the structure. So that could, they could still build the structure at eight feet and then do stone stairs and they wouldn't need relief for that.
Okay. And then, uh, the porch is less than 24 inches? It wouldn't be included as well or something like that? 28 inches? I forget.
To grade? Guards?
Well, yeah, like railings or no, that, that has, that's just railings. It has nothing to do with steps. Okay. Forget what I said. Cause technically under a certain height from the ground, you don't technically need railings. If you're under a certain height from the ground. Which I think is, is it 21? It's 30.
30.
Oh, wow. Geez. Any other questions, board members? Okay. Do you guys have anything to add? Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Jessica, is there anyone out there?
No, no one has raised their hand.
No one has raised their hands. Okay. Um, anyone like to, uh, have a discussion or a motion?
Make a motion.
Excellent.
All right. Motion to approve the petition of Joseph Penna. Okay. This is in, uh, Pena. I, I think
You got it right the first time.
All right. With regard, okay, with regard to 165 North Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Okay. What basically they're asking for is that they, uh, they want to put a porch across the front of the property. Okay. They're referring to this as a covered deck, be located on the first story. And there'll be nine point two feet from the front property line. The required front, front yard setback is 35 feet. So therefore relief of 25.8 feet is requested. Okay. Okay. The, uh, Lila Fortin Penna and Joseph Penna both testified. Okay. They told us what they wanted to do. Uh, they were quizzed by board members as to traffic conditions. Uh, as to, uh, uh, con- uh, conditions with regard to the wall in front and various other matters. All right. No one else, uh, spoke in support or opposition. Uh, before I forget, I want to make part of the record. Okay. The plot plan, uh, location plan for lot 95 of assessors map 49 dash one. Okay. Uh, owned by at that time Timothy J. and Elizabeth Ison, I S O N. Uh, dated July 2004. All right. With regard to them, uh, satisfying 907A1 of our ordinance. Okay. Clearly their hardship is due to the location of the house on the lot. It's a long, thin lot. If the house were, uh, located differently, they would be able to put a, a porch on without coming to us and asking us to allow them to do so. Okay. Uh, it is not the result of any prior action on their part. Okay. Clearly will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. To that matter, it will make the house much more attractive. Okay. Uh, it is clearly the least relief necessary for what they want to do. It's only an eight foot long wide porch. And if it were not granted, it would be more than a mere inconvenience because they wouldn't be able to do it. Right? And, uh, uh, we talk safety concerns with them. And that's all I have to say. Uh, and I asked the motion be granted.
Excellent. Motion is made. Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Daniels. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Jurzak?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Charkewick?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, I, motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you guys for seeing us tonight too. I really appreciate that.
No problem. Enjoy.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye Jess.
Hey, wait a minute. There wasn't, you knew them. It's fun. So, um, okay. So there was one thing, um, aside from our, our approval of the minutes. Did you, Amy, want to go through? No. Okay.
Too late, too late.
Too late. All right.
Another time.
All right. Um, you're all out of the woods then. So Approval of the minutes from November 18th, 2020?
Yeah.
Yes. That would be, uh, okay. Motion made. All in favor?
November 18th. I'm sorry.
Hi. Okay. And, uh, who is going to be here on January 20th in the beautiful new year? Is everyone going to be here?
Me.
January 20th, big day.
Yeah, I will not.
Yes, it is. Is it really that same day? I'm going to be exhausted and drunk. Richard, you're going to be here?
I will not be.
You will not be here. Okay.
I believe, uh, Bill Mark said he would be here, so I will follow up with him on that.
Please.
But, um, Rick, did you indicate in the event?
Yes. I, what I said to you, Jess, is that I, I want to be able to look at the properties. Okay. But in a if, if you don't have enough people, then I will do it from Florida. Okay. But, uh, obviously if I'm not in the state, I cannot look at the properties.
You can't fly home just to look at the property?
Well, I could, but, uh,
You definitely need a raise then.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, everyone, and happy holidays. Good job, Bill. You did a great job on the motion.
Oh, thank you.
So, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Excellent. Everybody in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Next year.
Everybody's doing today.
Happy holidays.
Happy Hanukkah, folks.
You got it.
You too.